And welcome to the June 28, 2007, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. George, will you lead us in the pledge?
I would like to.
I remember what it was.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item of approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes or motion?
I move we approve.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Everything on the agenda tonight is quasi judicial, so anybody that wishes to speak tonight, please take the oath. Terry.
Stand with me. We did say tonight, right?
Do you swear, R. Fund, that testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and not the deception?
I do.
Looks like we're gonna have a long night. Okay, anybody want to pull anything on consent? Does anybody from the public wish to speak on an item that is on consent? Okay, seeing none, motion?
Move approval as presented by staff.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, sorry, I guess I need to read this into the record.
Just the title.
Uh, okay, A is Belarosa and B is Diamond Court West. Thanks.
Perfect.
Items not on consent, Summer Walk, request for major site plan approval and site plan and preliminary plat approval for 128-unit multifamily residential development to be known as Summer Walk. VGS Homes LLC owner, Shulky Billings Stoddard LLC agent, located in the west side of 64th Avenue, north of County Road 510, zoning classification is RM6 residential multifamily, up to six units per acre, land use designation L2, low-density residential, up to six units per acre. Density on this project is 5.09 units per acre, and this is quasi judicial. Brian, you're up.
Thank you Chairman Bruce. This is a request for a project known as Summer Walk, and as you stated, is for major site plan and preliminary plat approval. The site is located just south of the city of Sebastian, and it is between Schuman Drive, which is also known as 66th Avenue, and 64th Avenue, which is along the east boundary of the site. In this area, the unincorporated county just south of Sebastian is predominantly zoned RM6 multifamily residential, and there's also some agricultural zoning and conservation zoning in the county, in that general area. And this is a view of the site, which as you can see is presently undeveloped and has a little bit of access or frontage, I should say, onto Schuman Drive, although most of the site does sit closer to 64th Avenue. And just to the north of the site is the Wabaso Cemetery, and then further north, all around that, would be the Sebastian Highlands. And then to the south of the site, there's a mix of single-family and multifamily residences, primarily along 64th Avenue. Looking at the overall project, it's just over 25 acres, and it includes a mix of residential unit types, of which there's a total of 128. And in the northern, you know, half or so of the project, these are detached residential units, which will be sold on small lots that are essentially about the same size as the footprint of the house, similar to other projects in the county such as Waterford Lakes. And then the southern half of the project will be just your standard fee simple town homes, which will also be on a small lot, although these will be attached units, and there are 80 of the townhomes. Overall, the density for the project is 5.09 units per acre. The entrance into the site is from Schuman Drive, and then in addition to that, there is also an emergency access, which is to be provided from 64th Avenue. Based on the site's traffic study, the site is required to contribute to the intersection improvement at County Road 510 and 66th Avenue. And in addition to that, the site is also required to escrow its fair share of the paving costs for the improvement of 64th Avenue, and that's based on its frontage on 64th Avenue. The stormwater management plan for the site includes two wet stormwater tracks, the larger one, which is in the center of the site, and then there's a smaller one along the site's west boundary. And then looking at some of the landscape requirements that affect the site, there is a conservation tract, which is in the northwest corner of the site, and this is also where the upland set aside is located, as well as a wetland area that is to be preserved. This site is also the same area where there is an existing scrub j habitat, and as part of the site's approval, they will need to get approval of a scrub j habitat conservation plan from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And in addition, there are gopher tortoises, which currently their habitat is throughout parts of the northern part of the site, and the project developer will be relocating the gopher tortoises as the project is developed, both onsite to this area, the conservation area, and then if necessary, to off-site areas, which would be approved by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation. There's also a perimeter buffer requirement around the, most of the boundary of the site, and that is for a 25-foot wide type B buffer, and this will include a six-foot opaque feature, which will be a solid wall. Other required improvements for the site include right-of-way dedications, both for Schuman Drive, which will be with compensation, and then for 64th Avenue, which is without compensation, in order to bring that road up to the 60-foot local road right-of-way requirement. In addition, sidewalks are required along the site's 64th Avenue frontage and internally throughout the site, and the site is required to set aside a minimum of 7.5% of the overall site area as green space or recreation area, and this is satisfied for the project, which sets aside a total of 7.9%, and this is primarily located in the conservation tract, as well as a small park area adjacent to the larger stormwater tract. As was stated, this is also a request for preliminary plat approval, and the requirements for a plat over site plan are in LDR Section 913.096. And essentially, the lot for each unit is to contain only the area needed for the unit, as well as the immediate improvements associated with that unit, such as a courtyard or a patio, and a final plat is to be recorded prior to the conveyance of any unit to a future owner. Based on this analysis, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant major site plan approval for the project with the conditions listed in the staff report, and in addition, that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant preliminary plat approval for the project.
Okay, looks like 66th Avenue is gonna get a lot of traffic. Any questions up here?
Yes.
Go for it.
Would you go back to the zoning map? Would you show me with your mouse the project that we, the area that came before us a couple weeks ago?
It's actually south of what is displayed in the map, probably about 1,000 feet or so, or less, off the southern edge of what's shown on the map, but it's on the east side of 66th Avenue at the intersection with 510.
Okay, how close is this to the Barber Street intersection? What?
I would say it's about a quarter mile south of Barber.
Quarter mile, okay.
Approximately.
When I, we had a project come before us a couple of weeks ago in this same vicinity, and because of the traffic problems we have at 66th and 510, I called Chris Moore and I asked him if he would present to us tonight, or have somebody present to us tonight, what your plans are for that intersection. Do you have that? He said he'd have somebody. No, and he said he wasn't gonna do it.
I wasn't asked to relay that information.
Did Chris relay that information to anybody?
Looks like it didn't happen.
My big concern here is that 66th Avenue, north of 510, is the next-to-the-worst intersection that I think we have in the North County. So I asked Chris what the plans were, and what he told me did sway some of my concerns, that you're going to, and let me know if I'm correct on this, you're going to four-lane that area of 66, and you're going to have a median, and that the traffic for this project will be right-in, right-out only, and that anybody who wants to leave this project and go south has to come out onto 66, turn right, go north to the Barber Street intersection, do a U-turn, and come back south on 66 to get through the intersection of 510 to go south.
Wow. Yep. Is that what's recommended? Because I don't.
Well, it's gonna be, that was what was told to us last, on this last project.
Oh, I confirmed that with Chris today. That's what's going to happen.
Yeah, it's bad.
So my concern was, we have an emergency entrance set up on 64th, so I asked why we couldn't have an exit on 64th. Chris said, because the people who live on 64th were adamantly against an entrance or exit on 64th. I thought 64th would be a common, I mean, common sense to come out 64th to go south.
That was my thought as well.
So I understand that the applicant is not willing to make that change, and that the neighborhood would not be happy with that change. So I just thought I'd let the commission know where we actually do stand on this.
I think the dilemma, I talked to Stan about this and some other projects, the dilemma is, is in the, we have, we have just changed our rule on peak hour traffic, whether you require a turn lane or not, and, you know, we've dropped the number, where are we on peak hour? Is it 15? What was the number?
I think it varies from 20 trips to 30 trips, depending on the volume of traffic at buildout of the project and the, on the road itself.
And I don't know how close.
That's not what the backup says. It says 42 and 48.
Which backup are you talking about?
The traffic engineering backup.
For this project?
Attachment 3A.
Right, that's peak hour trips, but they're split between entering and exiting.
They're moving north and.
The peak hour trips are moving north. Most of the trips are, I think 41 are projected to be going north.
Right.
From 510 into the project, so they're not gonna have an issue with a right-in, right-out because we only count PM peak hours, and they'll be going home.
And so, I mean, I think the same thing's occurring here that occurred last, a couple of weeks ago, we've got an intersection that's a very bad intersection, that we're worried about the engineering specs on. We're not engineers, and we have a rule and a formula.
Wait a minute now, speak for yourself.
Well, I'm sorry, we do have a, we do have an engineer. But I'm at a loss about how you force them or tell them to put in a turn lane. I mean, common sense tells me, I think you should have a turn lane here, but same thing's gonna happen here that happened last week, or a couple of weeks ago, and that is, we talk about it, but we can't act on it, so.
Well, we also have the same problem.
And if we don't like the rule, then we need to go back and revisit the rule again, and try and get our numbers where we think they should be, but I really believe it's coincidental, and it's, that it's this strip that we get hit twice with, and if it was any, another road, the numbers probably wouldn't, if it was 64th, the numbers wouldn't be a problem. It's the fear of 66th Avenue, which is, I think, probably justified because it's such a busy area.
So maybe we need to add into that formula the type of road that the left turn lane is required on, like you said.
We're gonna have to revisit that.
Like you said, if it was 64th, we wouldn't require a left turn lane. It's 66, and it requires a left turn lane because of the amount of traffic, doesn't it?
It doesn't require it, we would like one.
Okay, yes, we maybe should rethink those, that formula.
It's even worse because people coming home to this development from the Sebastian area have to.
They can't get home.
Yeah, it's, you know, I mean, they have to make a U-turn, I guess at 66 then 510.
If the county reacts and does what they say they're gonna do in time, I mean, I don't think this project will be built out, you know, overnight. This is gonna be, it's a fairly big project, so I mean, it's not gonna happen that quickly. Similar to the request we have later on in the agenda, where they, they wanna cut back on the turn lane until they get into another building, because they're moving a lot slower than what they initially thought. And so, I mean, I think, and you know, I'm concerned, but this, this rule and the stipulation, you know, fair is fair. I mean, we can't just judgmentally just rewrite the rule because we're worried about this street, and we, we either should've been smart enough, or we've gotta get.
Smarter.
Then I'm requesting that this, the LDR that controls this come back up under Commissioners' Matters, or we do a, maybe staff would like to do a presentation on the Land Development Regulation, as we changed it a few years ago, with some suggestions just to changing it again, so that the determination will be not only by the number of trips, but by the type of road that those trips come out on, so we can maybe solve some of these problems. This is not fair to the people who are right now using 66th Avenue in the south end of Sebastian. It might be fair to the developer, but it is not fair to the citizens who are now having to deal with the issue. Mr. Shulky would like to say something.
Hi, absolutely, Joseph Shulky, Shulky Billings Stoddard, Bier Beach, Florida, and I'm the engineer of record for this project. I first wanted to say about the traffic issues, I'm not aware of any complaints from 64th Avenue residents to use it or not, if they went to the county, not to us, the developer. And I can tell you, we would not have objection to using that entrance as well to come in and out. It's shown as emergency access, are, of course, are favored or preferred access to 66th Avenue, but we have an access, we can widen that from, I think we've got it as a one-lane road, or, I think it's already a two-lane road, we can use 64th Avenue, we do not have a problem with that.
It's not paved though, is it?
It's gonna have to be.
We're showing, we're showing our driveway coming out to 64th Avenue.
To a paved, and it's paved?
No, we'd have to escrow our fair share along the frontage. I mean, we'd have to use a dirt road, but we can use it, and that would be, you know, I think a reasonable term.
Thank you very much.
The driveway's paved, 64th Avenue is not.
Right, we would, you know, obviously, if that becomes a median, if that's a median restricted, which we weren't aware of either.
Really?
Yeah, I had no idea, it's not in the staff report, and it's news to me. I wasn't at the last meeting when you guys talked about it, obviously, but we weren't aware of it.
Your partner was.
And if we can't make a left out, then we would, I think, probably the residents in the suburbs are gonna wanna go out 64th Avenue. Obviously, most of the works, most of the shopping at this point in time is to the south, not to the north.
Take a lot of load off of that. Would staff have any projected buildout for 64th being paved?
Well, 64th Avenue is actually paved just south of the site, up to, you know, there's the ball field that's east of the site, which is shown on the aerial display now, and I believe that 64th Avenue is paved all the way up to that road that goes over to the ball field.
Okay.
So it's a matter of a few hundred feet.
It's only a couple hundred feet, and you know, if we were in the situation where we couldn't make a left out, you know, we would make, perhaps pave to our entrance road and then escrow north of our entrance road, and create that as another entrance, and we would not object to that.
64th Avenue can be controlled with reduced, reduced speed zones, so to keep the neighbors happy, if there is a concern, and as far as I'm concerned, I have no problems with this project, if you have a southbound exit out of 64th Street, I'm happy.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's been, that was my concern. Brian, can you?
We don't have an objection.
Thanks, Joe.
Address your revision here, real quick.
Can I ask a quick question beforehand? Joe, is that better than having an in-and-out, a deceleration lane, or a left?
Right turn.
Right turn.
We're proposing a right turn lane on 66, it's on our plans. We have a right turn lane. If that's what you're concerned about.
We're talking southbound left.
I'm thinking about, right, it's the left turn lane coming back in.
From 66th Avenue?
Yeah.
We would prefer that. I mean, obviously, that is the best mode of, you know, there is shopping opportunities and parks in the city of Sebastian, Pelican Island Elementary. I don't know where we're zoned, if this is zoned for that Pelican Island, but obviously, parents are dropping kids off, are gonna come back that way, so, you know, I did not know there's gonna be a median, you know, closing this driveway. It's news to me, and we did not expect that. And you know, actually, when you, when you look at the plan, and for planning purposes, any river county had asked us not only to build this entrance road, but to provide stubouts to the properties north of our entrance road and south, and if you're doing that, you're doing that to eliminate driveways on 66th Avenue. To me, that seemed like an obvious place to have the median opening, would be right there, because of that. And if you see on the drawing up on the board, we're providing driveway stubouts to the adjacent properties, the north, one north of us being undeveloped in a large piece, one south being, I don't know if the one south is undeveloped or has a single-family home, but.
Is there room, is there room for a left turn from north to south into your property? Is there, is there space there if you did it? And would you do it? Because if you have to do this, county won't do that for you.
Well, from what I understand, the county's.
That's why I'm trying, wondering for your own sake, is that not better than the other option?
What I understood was the county was four-laning the road.
But that won't happen for.
Two years, Chris said. Chris said two years, which really is a good timeframe for you.
Right, well, we also have a phasing schedule that takes about four or five years on this project. I don't think we'd even need the left turn lane. Now, if they have a median, and I don't know the size of the median, if there's a 16, 18-foot median, then it would be easy to put a left turn lane in there, and not much more cost than building a right turn lane, and that would be an asset, and, you know, to have that.
Especially if there's other land being surrounded there.
Right. The only thing I could tell you is if there was a restriction in right-of-way, because we do have Sebastian Highlands lots on the west side of 66, and I'm sure the county can get right-of-way in that area very easily, nor could we, because there's actually homeowners and single-family homes on the.
That was the problem on the other project, was the space, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Jed would now.
I'm sorry, there's a little confusion over this, but this is all new to me as well.
Stan is over here chafing at the group.
I'm not chafing too bad, but I appreciate being, being recognized. Couple of things that, one, I'd like to ask, Joe, the feedback we'd gotten from the Wabaso community was concerns that traffic from this project, maybe even others connecting to that entry road, could come through 64th Avenue. Would they be allowed to go through this project to get to 66th Avenue if they wanted to, or would traffic only go one way through the existing neighborhood, but residents in that neighborhood could not likewise go through this project? So my question, Joe, is would the owner, you know, grant access, public access through this project to allow traffic to go both ways?
I do not believe so. He has planned a gated community.
Why would they want to go north through this project? Let's go through this project to go north.
I've heard quite a bit of testimony, the intersection is pretty.
Right, that's the intersection.
Stan, there's some other.
I'm gonna avoid that intersection.
Don't blame them.
But there are other roads that lead to 66th Avenue just south of us.
And people do it all the time today, even.
Stan, there are, there are roads from 64th Avenue to go to 66 right now, in the neighborhood to the south of us, there's already inter.
Yes, there is.
Interconnectivity through there.
There is.
Just asking if it was supposed to go one way or not, Joe.
It seems, it seems to me that, you know, it's nice to have 64th as an, as an option, but to, from my perspective, somehow working in a turn lane makes more sense than opening up 64th. I just, I mean, just so you have room on 66th and, and not have to go, have the problems or not with the neighborhood, I just, that's why I was wondering if there's space for it, and what would be involved in asking for requiring a turn lane out there rather than something else.
What would you favor, Joe? 64th, exit of 64th, or a turn lane on 66, which would you prefer?
We would prefer, and honestly, I think the county would prefer 66. I mean, there are several parcels that are gonna enter on that road.
Chris said that's not an option, a turn lane. He said there's gonna be a median on 66.
I'm just surprised, I don't know the size of the median, but if the median is 12-foot or wider, we should be able to fit.
Chris is probably on his way back here now as we speak, if he's watching.
Well, it sounds like there's room for movement on this, so is there some way we can work this into our motion?
I don't know.
As the next step.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the project.
We have a word discussion?
Yeah, we have, I have some other things to talk to you all about.
Why?
Go ahead.
I second your motion.
I just jumped in because you were talking about the turn lane and stuff, but I do have some other.
Do you have some other issues on this project?
Yeah, do you all wanna finish your?
No, no.
I think we kind of understand.
We're in a roadblock right now.
You're in a roadblock? Okay, very good.
We're in a roadblock.
Um, there was a, we've been working on the project, obviously, for quite a while with staff, and we thought we had the environmental issues resolved in November, December, and then we came across some traffic issues that were holding us up. Environmental was signed off, and then traffic wasn't signed off, or around December, January, traffic signed off, and then we got a new round of issues with environmental. So we're taking off P&amp;Z hearing in January, and it pushed us about six months to this timeframe to work everything out with staff. We did some additional environmental studies, and obviously, I'm talking about gopher tortoises, scrub jays, those type of issues. We worked out, we thought all the issues with staff, and there was a revision, condition number five, that was just handed to me five minutes before I walked into the meeting, and that was, prior to issuance of a land clearing and true removal permit, they changed for phase four, they changed for, for the project, the applicant will need to obtain approval of scrub j habitat conservation plan by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Now, if any of you have ever tried to get a permit from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife for a habitat conservation plan, it is a minimum two-year process. And our consultant's here, she can tell you, and if any of the staff's here, if they can tell me they've seen HCCP issued in less than two years, I'd, I'd like to hire whoever they use, because we haven't been able to do it. And so I think that is an unfair restriction on this project. The scrub j habitat is in the northwest corner of the site, we've got four phases of the project, and so the fourth phase, you know, encompasses the whole scrub j area and actually goes outside of it, and we thought that was a good idea and a good way to handle the project. With the condition as written, we can't even look at starting even the first phase for two years, and so I wanted you to look at that, reconsider that condition, and change it back to phase four only.
Is that, Brian, is that how you read this? Because it looked like to me they couldn't start phase four without that permit, but they could start phase one.
No, they, they changed.
That's in the revision.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
There's a revision somewhere here.
Yeah, and that change was just handed to me just a few minutes ago.
About four o'clock this afternoon, I was advised that not everything was, with this, I guess with the scrub j survey, had been accepted by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the, essentially, the area does, where the scrub j habitat's been delineated, is roughly, was within the boundaries of phase four, which is in the northwest portion of the site. The, I guess staff's concern was that, before we saw, started seeing any clearing going on, since the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service hadn't signed off on the, on the, I guess the scrub j survey for the project, you know, we wanted to make sure that we had all our bases covered, and that's why the condition number five was modified based on that information from applying just prior to the issuance of land clearing and true removal permits for phase four, but for the entire project.
Can we change that to be a little bit easier on the developer? And what I'm thinking is that to get U.S. Fish and Wildlife to sign off on the surveys and not necessarily on the HCP, he is right, the HCP is gonna take a good, long time.
Yeah, that would be fine.
I'd rather, do you have an HC plan for scrub jays in the county line? We, we actually have an HCP approved for the Sebastian Highlands area for the lots, and then there have been several other. That was the Sebastian deal, that was a long time ago, for a very special area. Well, for most, actually, for most of the Highlands, what we did is, we set aside a lot of scrub j habitat in mitigation for allowing Sebastian Highlands lots to be developed. This area is not included in that. This area is not included. And so I think we need a countywide scrub j habitat conservation plan, and we don't have one, is that right? Because you've got the same problem occurring down south in Oslo Road and support. Right, HCPs are many times done on an incremental basis, a project-by-project basis. Right, and that's, that's really not a good functional way of saving the species. And the scrub jays are going down. In the last three years, the reproduction poll has gone down 50%. The population's going down 50%. And if you're gonna go just by project by project by project, you're not gonna save any scrub jays. by project by project by project, you're not gonna save any scrub jays. That's just pretty common sense. And so I think what the county needs to do is get together with Fish and Wildlife and work out a countywide plan. That would solve a lot of problems up here, like the Sebastian Highlands. I mean, that worked out eventually, but they had, they put a freeze on everything until finally people agreed that they would do something. And so I think today, we, we should consider that here. Because what he, what you're proposing on this is that you're even worried about a phase within a project. What can, if you're gonna do that, and you've got the first phase, the second phase done, what options does the Fish and Wildlife have in coming up with a, with a habitat protection plan? When you've already built out three quarters of it, you're leaving one quarter for the Fish and Wildlife. The only option they have to do is sue the county, which they may do. They may get just fed up enough to sue the county, or the Audubon Society or some other group would say, you know, we wanna save our scrub jays in our county. We'll sue the Fish and Wildlife. They'll in turn sue the county for not having an appropriate plan.
Richard, what are you proposing for this particular project?
I think we wait on all these projects. These, this is, the scrub j habitat is so short in demand, and it's getting, um, developed in these project by project, and there's nothing that, there's no plan for the whole area to save the scrub jays. So I think before we approve this project, this project's got a lot of problems, traffic.
Right.
And it's into the scrub j area. I think we hold this until we get a scrub j plan. I mean, you, you've got the gopher tortoise plan there, too. I mean, this is, this is really key habitat. And I think if, the county's gotta work out a plan with the, with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to do this. So I'd like to see we table this until a plan gets done.
What portion of the codes do you see them having failed to, um-
Well, they haven't followed, they haven't got a HCP plan, um, with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. This, their application, if you look at the date on it, was May 30th. I mean, what kind of planning is that? I mean, I don't know what, how long you had.
But my point is, he's, he's jumped through all the hoops.
Well, he hasn't jumped through the hoop of, of saving an endangered federal species.
He's jumped through all the hoops that are currently published for the county. I know, I know what you wanna do, and I think we need to do that. We need a countywide plan, but I don't see how we can stop one project who has already gone through the hoops.
Well, I mean, he hasn't addressed the scrub j issue. I mean, how are you gonna go save scrub jays if you're gonna save it to phase four? What, what kind of permit are you gonna be asking the U.S. Fish and Wildlife to give you?
I agree with you, but that's gonna have to be between them and phase four.
It's a federal, it's a federal listed species.
When, when this thing came, I mean, you know, we, everybody knows to look for tortoises and scrub jays. I'm just surprised that you all got caught up in the timeframe here, having been through this earlier. But, Richard, if we, I understand the dilemma you've got for the county, but I mean, looking at this project, the county's original proposal said phase four. I'm just wondering if you let the south, if you, where is phase, the phase one part? If we, if you did just phase one and then stopped?
Well, why can't he, they work out a plan for the saving the scrub jays and then develop in, in the way they should?
Well, I mean, if, if he's correct, if they're correct-
Why let him start?
How long would that, I mean, how long would that take? If these guys, I mean, time is money to guys. I mean, that's the downside of this, and they've been started, they've started this.
By losing scrub jays.
And I can appreciate that, but I mean, on the other hand, if that was the case, then I don't know, you know, if it's gonna take two years, I, I'm not sure why they didn't look sooner, because they know they gotta have a, hate the plan too, but-
Bob, how did this, bring us up to date on how this happened at such a, a late point in this application?
Let me tell you, what we do on projects like this, if projects have significant natural resources or historic resources, the applicant has to have a study done by an expert. In this case, they had to have an environmental study done, which died, which identified the species of concern here. And I think what the environmental survey showed, and Brian or Joe can correct me, is the scrub j habitat was limited to the, mostly the northwest part of the site. The rest of the site is not good habitat. Scrub j habitat is usually xeric scrub areas that are not well-treed. If you've got pine flatwoods in most of the area, it's not gonna be j habitat. Uh, so what the environmental study showed, what the species were that we're concerned with, where their habitat was, and what really needed to be done to, um, to protect them. In this case, they are gonna have to get all the necessary sign-offs from all of the appropriate environmental agencies before they can go forward. I think, I think it was an acceptable compromise that was talked about, that prior to initiating any type of activity, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service would have to sign off on the delineation of habitat area, correct? And, and that would essentially make sure that, that any of the area that could be set aside for scrub jays wouldn't be touched if the project went ahead.
So if approved this evening, and the commission approves it, then they would have to work with Fish and Wildlife on an ongoing basis during the development to make sure that the species of concern is taken care of?
Yeah, in the, before they initiated any activity, they'd have to get U.S. Fish and Wildlife Survey's sign off that their survey is okay, that they have delineated the habitat areas correctly. And before they get into the, the phase four areas, they would have to have the full HCP done.
I think that's- Listening to that, Joe, I kinda, you, I mean, I, I know the sensitivity of environmental spec, that doesn't sound that unreasonable. Are you talking about that's gonna take you two years to get Fish and Wildlife to sign off?
No, no, no. A habitat conservation plan is what they said in the condition, and that takes two years. That's actually, that's actually saying, address, mitigate, whatever for the habitat, and you can't do that. What, what I would like to do is, um, have U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Trish Adams, prior to land clearing and tree removal, that she gives us a technical assistance letter, says, "We agree this is, we agree with the line of the scrub j habitat. Anything outside of that line is okay."
Yeah, that sounds good.
Anything inside that line, we would have to do HCCP, and we anticipate that will be phase four, and not even all of phase four. But, you know, we, we can agree prior to land clearing and tree removal permits on, um, on the project, that we get a technical assistance letter that defines the habitat area, and areas outside of that, we can move forward on.
That certainly sounds reasonable, yeah. Richard?
Well, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the plan before we approve it. I mean, I, I can't see why you're coming in two weeks asking for a plan. And, I mean, this is when the report went out. Trish Adams, um, May 30th, 2007. It's on your, on your last pages back there. Now, they did CC her. That was to King.
We, my, um, our environmental consultant spoke to Trish Adams today. If you wanna ask her some questions, she's available.
Would she, well, sure.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Cirillo with Biotech Consulting. And we're the environmental consultant that's been looking at the scrub j habitat and the gopher tortoises that are on the property. And, um, this afternoon, Trish called, and we discussed the project. And, um, she and I discussed that, you know, that we need to coordinate with her, and we explained to her that, you know, we would be coordinating with her regarding the scrub j habitat, so there's not any adverse impacts to the scrub j themselves. Um, and this was part of the condition of the plat that you, the preliminary plat here tonight, that, you know, she was under the understanding, this was a, kind of one of the conditions of the permit, of this, that we would have to coordinate with her on the scrub j habitat and get a technical assistance letter.
Yeah, good. I mean, but I think you, I think she wanted the plan done?
No, we would coordinate with her on a technical assistance letter that shows where the scrub j habitat is, and where the scrub j habitat, where the boundary territories are and are not on the property.
Before you build a phase?
Yes.
Before-
Where is phase one in this?
Go through the phases for us, will you?
All right. Yeah, I can walk up to the, excuse me.
Brian, when you made this change, this was something based on, I'm still confused as to why we did this. Did we gotta, did you talk to U.S. Fish and Wildlife? I mean, who, why, why all of a sudden did we do this?
Well, U.S. Fish and Wildlife-
For the project, where it says "the" project rather than phase four. You had a call from U.S. Fish and Wildlife?
The county environmental planner talked to U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
And this was their request of us? The word, this type, I mean, something where you, the impression was this wording?
Something, well, I, I don't know necessarily, I don't know that they wanted it tied to approval of the habitat conservation plan. I think there was just some concerns about it being tied to phase four only.
Right. I, I believe, we learned of a concern today, that the agency had not signed off on what we, we called the survey. They're talking, they're talking about a technical assistance letter. I think we're all saying the same thing, but we're taking a long time to say it.
I'm not saying that you're not. I'm just, that's why I'm, I'm kinda stumbling around up here. I'm thinking, why is-
Today, this afternoon, today, this afternoon, we found out from someone at the agency that they hadn't signed off on the survey, you know, exactly where the habitat is. So, the, the condition, we're, we're fine, staff's fine with the condition reading that they not proceed with any land clearing on any of the site until the agency signs off on-
So, I mean, if this is reworded where they have a, they, at a minimum, this approval of the, uh, minimum of technical assistance letter.
Right. Rather than they have-
And then, and then, look, as a safeguard, if that's, if you wanna at least build in some safeguard, then you think in terms of phases and say, after phase one, after, or whatever, you give yourself, if two years, I mean, I, I don't know how long you're gonna go from phase one to phase two, or what your plan is, but in listening to this, it would seem to me, in order to get you started, which is something you wanna get done, is that if we have the technical assistance letter and you can't proceed past phase something, until you have your HCP, then you know you've got a deadline, the clock's running. So I'm thinking, is phase one on the south?
George, phase one and two are, um, and a little bit of three goes into the north, and four is the entire north. What I would propose-
I'm not going, I mean, I just wanna stay as far south and give them a buffer that I can, so.
Well, even phase four gives them so, quite a bit of a buffer. I mean, phase four, the scrub j habitat is not all of phase four, it's a small portion of phase four.
But, but, phase one and two are on the south end, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I, that's what I was asked, trying to figure out where they were.
Do you have my other plans?
Yeah. Brian, can you put that back up, because I didn't have-
I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion wording for this.
Is this based on, uh, on habitat alone, or are there found pairs?
Oh, no, there are scrub jays in the vicinity. Their nest is actually off-site on the, um, southwest corner of the single-family home site. Um, that's to the west of the property. There's a single-family homeowner who lives there, and at the corner of his property was where this year's nest was.
That's in the southwest?
To the southwest, um, where the circular wetland is, right there where Joe's pointing the mouse, um, off-site right there was where the nest was this year. And, um, since then, the, uh, pair has moved off of that tree and are now, um, in the vicinity of the, um, closer to 66th Street, there's a dirt road where the single-family homeowner enters his property, and, um, they've been moving over here. And it's, my understanding is what they did last year as well, um, after they had their nest season, they moved over to that property, um, with their juvenile.
What is the current, uh, area that's necessary for a nesting pair?
The current area, I believe, is 25 acres, or 13 acres, actually.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion?
Let's see the phases. Where is phase one?
Okay.
I can't, I don't have, I don't have a- Are they both south of your main entrance into 66th?
Brian, you're gonna have to control the mouse and show us the phases.
Okay. Um, I think phase four, correct me, Joe.
Not four, one and two.
Phase one? Phase one is, I think, this part of the site, and- Does that also include digging the stormwater lake?
Yeah, the stormwater lake was all of phase one.
So this is part of phase one, and then these units in this area, and then the entrance to 66th. And phase two is in the southeast corner of the site, and-
It, it includes all the townhomes?
All the townhomes, okay. So by-
Doing, were you, when you dug the lake, are you doing site work with your dirt out of the lake, all up into phase three and four, all up on the north as well? You're gonna spread your dirt up there when you're digging that lake?
Yeah, we were, we were gonna do, uh, all the earthwork to the limits we could.
Say that again?
Yes.
That, I mean, 'cause what I was trying to do is keep your, limit your work for the time being, kind of on the south end, south of your main driveway on the south end, away from that until you had your HCP, which would mean that you couldn't really dig the north end of your lake and then spread dirt up into where you have phase three and four.
I, I mean, it's entirely possible, we could, you know, we, we could face the lake.
Is that all that onerous? I mean, at least you can move ahead and keep moving, it'd seem like to me.
Yeah, absolutely. What, what I, I was hoping, if you would agree to it, we could, if the condition could be reworded to, we need to get a technical assistance letter, um, from U.S. Fish and Wildlife prior to any land clearing and tree removal for the entire project.
What does a technical assistance letter mean?
What it is, and I've gotten one before, and Stephanie's gotten many more, but I've got one for a project in the city of Sebastian. And, um, what they do is they agree, they say, yes, we agree with this line, the, um, if you will, the scrub j habitat area, and they say, you know, and they'll indicate areas outside of that line, they may ask for a buffer of 50, 100 feet. Outside that, you can move forward into your construction. Anything within this line, you have to go through the HCC process. So, what I'm asking for is if we can get a technical assistance letter from U.S. Fish and Wildlife prior to any land clearing or tree removal for any of the project, and, and in that letter, it will define the area that we can develop up to, and we would need to get an HCCP before development of anything, uh, inside of that area.
So they would define the line plus a buffer of where you could work?
Absolutely.
So if they didn't like the northwest corner was too close, they'd tell you, no, you couldn't work there, right?
Absolutely.
That'll work for me.
What about, um, just limiting development until the HCP is in place, uh, to a, an east-west line and, and only development south of that east-west line? I don't know where that line would be.
You mean north of their, like, north, south of their driveway, entrance to the 66th Avenue, which is what I was thinking, but the technical assistance letter sounds like-
It's just kind of an arbitrary line, you know? We, we'd certainly like to have a leeway, weren't we, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, in having them strike the line, and make it a condition that we submit to staff for, 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 for record as well.
I don't know about the technical assistant letter, but if they, I would like the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to sign off on this project. Now, they can say that the HCP plan can be later or whatever, but I think that they ought to have input before the project, any dirt gets turned.
All right.
And you get, uh, Trish Adams' approval.
Why don't we do this, um, let's go ahead and open this up for public discussion real quick, and then we can close it down and make a motion. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? One person, Jerry.
Uh, I'm Jerry Swanson, um, 1040 East Polo Grounds Drive. I think the technical assistant letter that Joe was talking about was for our project, um, city of Sebastian, a building for the hospital. And we worked literally for months, and Dr. Baker, I have to tell you, I think your idea is a wonderful idea. I don't think you can necessarily do it, um, after the fact. I think, we're working with the Fish and Wildlife is a very, very arduous, um, situation. And we got so frustrated, finally, I said, uh, this was a nine-acre site with the back three acres were scrub j habitat. And after nine months of working with them, I finally said, "Look, um, we will give you the three acres in the back. We'll dedicate it to the Fish and Wildlife. You can have it for scrub, scrub j habitat." And Trish Adams said, "Mr. Swanson, I appreciate your offer, but this is really inferior of scrub j habitat." So after all of this time, that was the response. I think it, it's a burden, more of a burden on a developer. If we had what you're suggesting upfront, where we knew all of the parameters, it would be really helpful to us and would take a lot of the pain out of working with Fish and Wildlife, very honestly. But there's a, there's a practical aspect of this whole thing, so I just wanted you to know that.
I appreciate that, and I think, uh, a countywide plan is what is needed. And then we will, we will-
I think, I think you have pretty much-
Solve this argument. But I think for this one particular project, I'd like to see, uh, Fish and Wildlife to sign off on it.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else from the public? See none. Close the public hearing. Somebody-
Can I ask Stan a question here?
Just before you word your motion, Stan, if we do something, and Donna, I'm sure, I think has some wording, but if we do something where we request in rewording of five, that the project may proceed provided they have this technical letter of assistance, approval by U.S. Fish and Game of the project, and a technical assistance letter defining their work area with... and HCP prior to something, because I guess if they... I mean, they can't... they cannot... at what point couldn't they proceed without an HCP? Do we have to define that or not?
Yeah, I think what we want is the agency to define that. And I think that the discussion is... it makes a lot of sense that the condition five is in the backup, gets broken down to two parts like we discussed.
That's what I mean. My point is, is we don't have to define the HCP. The agency's going to tell them that anyway.
Right.
Okay.
That way the agency knows what we're looking for, too.
Okay, Dr. Baker and Joe, see if this wording, if this is okay. In place of five, prior to issuance of a land clearing and tree removal permit for the project, the applicant will need to obtain a technical assistance letter defining the habitat area. And prior to any work being done inside the habitat area, the applicant will need to obtain approval by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, approval of a scrub jay habitat conservation plan by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services and/or Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. Does that satisfy you? Want me to go over again?
Yes, ma'am. It's fine.
Prior to... it's fine?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we got it.
The only question I would have, as you said, is defined by the letter, or work, go over the areas defined-
Prior to the issuance of land clearing and tree removal permits for the project, the applicant will need to obtain a technical assistance letter defining the habitat area. And prior to any work being done inside the habitat area-
In the area of the technical... it's the technical... as I understand, the technical assistance letter may define an area larger than the habitat area.
It'll define the habitat area plus a buffer.
So, you want it... whatever the letter defines is what you want. It's not the habitat area. It's whatever the letter defines. They can't go inside the letter.
Shouldn't it be the specific type of conservation area also, or habitat area?
Scrub jay habitat conservation.
Yeah, it'll define the actual area plus a buffer that they can't work in.
Defining the what area then? Technical assistance that are defining these-
The habitat area-
Doesn't it define an area?
The habitat area and any buffer.
That depicts the scrub jay territory?
Plus a buffer.
Right, define the area defined by the scrub jay territory.
Defining the habitat area, habitat and buffer area?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. That's good.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
No, not yet. I didn't get the right turn lane yet on 64th.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go for it.
In addition to changing five, two, and do I need to reword that again for you? Do you want me to... let me give you the wording?
Can you repeat the second part of that?
Okay, let's start with the whole thing on five. Prior to issuance of land... prior to issuance of land clearing and tree removal permits for the project, the applicant will need to obtain a technical assistance letter defining the habitat and buffer area.
Scrub jay.
Habitat, scrub jay habitat and buffer area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good answer.
All right. Then, prior to any work being done inside that area, a scrub jay habitat conservation plan by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services and/or Florida Fish and Wildlife Conference Conservation Commission.
Shall be obtained.
Shall be obtained.
Sounds good.
Okay. Then, as another condition, that there be an exit on 64th. So, I make a motion to approve this project based on those two changes plus staff's recommendations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I had one more question about the wetlands. This is a one-acre wetland?
It was.
It was? So, why... where was it? And why was it just obliterated with?
It was mitigated.
I don't know. What was the mitigation?
I had some questions on that, too. Same thing. Where was the mitigation?
I didn't see it on the plans, actually.
I want to know where the mitigation was. On-site, off-site? Wetlands? Where are wetlands?
The wetlands?
You're saying here that there's-
One acre.
279 acres of wetlands?
They're located... you can see them up on the site plan, just north or northwest of where the label for 64th Avenue is.
Okay.
It's in the area along the east boundary of the site, adjacent to 64th Avenue. And that-
Mouse. You want to show us the mouse?
Put your rodent over there. Okay.
Right in this area. And then this is a smaller wetland area that's about almost a quarter acre that is to be preserved within the conservation tract.
What is the mitigation for the wetland to the east?
Well, they'll have to obtain approval of their mitigation plan by St. John's before the site plan is released and the county issues a wetland resource permit.
So, it's not defined yet?
Not at this time.
Okay.
And probably won't be on-site, is what you're telling me?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Was this plan following the new landscape with the ordinance, with the ponds and things, not being rectangle or square?
No, and-
And before that, or is there a loophole that it got around this somehow?
No, there's no loophole except for the one that was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, approved by the Board of County Commissioners, to give projects until June 29th to be approved.
So, they just made it?
That's... right.
That's the-
Barely, one day.
So, that's... I mean, this whole thing has gone through so fast and in such a hurry that I think it needs more study.
Great.
They will get the mitigation done prior to destroying the wetlands that are going to be taken away, right?
Oh, yes. Yeah, the mitigation has to be approved before they can-
The agreement has to be approved before they do any-
Before they get any work on-site.
Right answer. And Dr. Baker, we need to put that discussion of yours on the agenda for next meeting, I think. Get a countywide plan. We need to figure out how to work that out. Okay, I'm off my soapbox.
I have one last question. There are a lot of peppers and Australian pines on this site. And what happened to those? I didn't... maybe I didn't read any.
They had to be removed.
They will be removed.
Yes, yeah, they're all still there today, but they are to be removed.
Okay, any more discussion? Do I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I oppose.
I believe you've stated your reason enough tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that turn on the 64th.
Yeah, that wasn't too painful, was it?
A lot less painful than I thought it was going to be.
Next item up, Treasure Coast Montessori School requests for administrative permit approval for preschool childcare facility to be known as Treasure Coast Montessori School. Treasure Coast Montessori School owner, Shulki Biddles and Stoddard LLC agent, located at 6328 Street, zoning classification A1, which is Ag. 1 up to one unit per five acres. Land use is Ag. 1 agriculture up to one unit per five acres. And this is also quasi-judicial. And Stephen, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. My name is Stephen Dirdup with Current Development. As you stated, this is a major site plan for Treasure Coast Montessori School. The proposed use was reviewed as a childcare facility and within agricultural zoning district. As so, it requires administrative permit use to regulate in scale, duration, or nature to avoid adverse impact on the surrounding properties. There are specific LDR requirements, and one of those is requirement by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The site is located on the north side of 8th Street, between 58th Avenue and 66th Avenue. This is an area that shows, gives a good proportion as to the size of the lot and the abutting properties and the location of trees. The site plan-
Can you go back to that and show us the delineation? I can't quite see it.
This would be... this would be the north property line, east property line, south property line, and west property line.
Okay.
These are the structures here and here. This will become a drain field for the septic system, driveway, circles in and out.
Okay.
The site plan currently exists of two structures on the north end of the property. There are going to be two proposed outdoor recreation areas on the northwest area, corner of the property. The proposed parking is located in various locations around the circular driveway. The existing driveway to the property will be removed and a new driveway will be expanded and located directly opposite 63rd Avenue. As required by the LDRs, type C buffers with opaque features, six-foot, in this case, six-foot vinyl fencing, is required around all outdoor recreation areas and abutting properties. In addition, there's a type C buffer with an opaque feature required along 8th Street. And there are 36 existing trees, 35 of which will be preserved on-site. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant major site plan approval for Treasure Coast Montessori School with the conditions listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Any questions from up here?
No, sir.
We're all okay. I will... we don't have to have a public hearing on this, but I will open the public hearing for public comment. Anybody from the public wish to speak?
My name is Elizabeth Petrie, and I own the property behind.
Get closer to them.
My name is Elizabeth Petrie, and I own the property directly behind this. And my access is to the west there. First of all, their fence is on the... it's on my... anyway, their fence is on the property line, which there's... it should be set back. There's no setback for the fence. So, they need to move the fence, first of all, and I don't-
I think that's the way it's stated in the backup here.
But I am opposed to this. I have a tree farm in the back.
Okay.
And I can't see where the tree farm is going to be benefited by a school. I'm concerned about the growth of the project. The impact is, it's going to be an impact on the traffic. They're gonna... I'm sure they're going to grow this school, have it grow. And this is only a 1.58 piece of property, acre piece of property. I think they're getting a little big here for this agricultural area. I bought this piece of property behind them and with the purpose of growing trees, being able to have peacocks, pigs, horses, whatever. It is agricultural. It isn't for a school. The traffic is going to be horrendous. And I'm just here to state that I'm not in favor of this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does Stephanie have any comments about this, whether this school can get larger and under what conditions?
They're already getting larger.
I think the state regulates the size, the number of students, I should say, that kind of go to the preschool. I believe 81 is what's... would be allowed with the state regulation here. But if they were to come in and get an expansion of the physical facility, that would require site plan approval. But we don't have any particular quantitative limitation other than just the normal site plan procedures if they were to come in in the future and want to expand.
Have we applied limits in the past on some areas? Some schools haven't we applied limits or not?
I don't-
We talk about it, but hadn't never done it?
I don't recall tying any... I think we've tied some conditions to when phasing, when a certain number of students came and we required some sort of off-site improvement or something. But I don't believe we've capped for an administrative permit use that. One other thing I just wanted to mention in terms of the way staff looked at the size of this, you know, using an existing house and basically converting the building area that's there. In terms of this plan that's in front of you, there is a lot of effort for tree preservation, which is why the parking spaces are where they are and so forth. Just from our perspective, it... we wouldn't be looking for an expansion if there were one proposed in the future that would upset that effort that they've made so far. But again, you know, we don't have a quantitative fix on the capacity, other than what the state does.
Where did that number 81 come from? Is it just based on the size of the property or...
I think there's several factors that the state takes into consideration when they set the capacity. There are different criteria, not just space, but different types of accommodations. There's a whole list of things that they do to arrive at a capacity number.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, Honorable Commissioner, this... my name is Darrell Peterson. I live at 6300 8th Street. My property is abutson, is directly adjacent on the east side of this property. Being involved in developing and so forth in the past, I often took the opportunity to outreach or speak to the adjacent property owners when there was a change in zoning in one form or another. We're going from a strictly residential area on 8th Street to now include some sort of commercial development, whether it's a school or whatever we're going to call it. There's been no outreach by the property owners to us to even discuss this. We've never seen a plan. I may be speaking on behalf of some of my neighbors, but we would have enjoyed the opportunity to discuss. The only discussion I had was with one representative, which asked me if I didn't like kids. I brought up two beautiful kids. I do like kids. That's not the issue. The issue is that we have residential property owners that are going to be adjacent to a school facility, which has the opportunity to upgrade at some future date, that will have 81 students that we're just hearing about tonight in a very small house with a pool and now with an extensive playground. 81 students is going to be at least 40 cars to 50 cars. Now, my driveway is a double driveway right adjacent to them. I can't tell you on 8th Street how many times I've almost had somebody visit me in the rear seat when I'm trying to turn into my driveway. This does not have any plan that I saw on the picture, anyway, for any sort of decel lane or any sort of accommodation for the kind of traffic that will be coming with at least 40 to 60 cars to drop off children. I would like to have the opportunity also to enjoy looking at what type of fencing and so forth, since I'm going to be directly affected by this. And again, I think it would have been smart upon the engineers or behoove the engineers to at least discuss this. There's been no signage other than one little sign handwritten saying they were looking for something to change here with the Montessori School. I don't even know right now, haven't had an opportunity to look, at what kind of effect it'll have on the value of my property, being right next to a school that may be expanding in the future, maybe actually devaluing my property as we speak. So, I think the good doctor talked about the previous application that was run through real quick. And again, the property owners that have a direct... are going to be directly impacted on this, really have not had an opportunity until tonight to even get a glimpse as to what the future may hold for us in our neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments.
Darrell, before you walk away, Mr. Chairman, tonight, we're just going to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. You will have an opportunity in between this time and the... no?
No, this is an administrative permit.
That's right, it's administrative permit. You're right. I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
One point here. In number nine on page two, talking about the landscaping, it says the type C buffer for the outdoor recreation areas will consist of a six-foot vinyl fence with a landscape buffer between the fence and abutting properties. Now, is that... it doesn't say that same wording for the type C buffer.
In the recommendation?
In the recommendation, should we... is it in the- In the recommendations, is it in the recommendations? I'm on page two, number nine.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. On the 8th Street frontage. It's, it's unclear whether number nine talks about all of the type C buffers or just one. Is, I guess we're having a conference here to figure this out. Is that correct or not?
All of the landscaping is between the fence and the property line. So the fence will set ten back, ten feet inside on the property. So the existing fences that are on the property lines will be removed.
They have to be moved. Okay. All right. I just wanted to be sure of that because that was one of the concerns of, of the lady that spoke with a tree form.
Was, was there any consideration for a deceleration lane? I mean, I, I think he's probably correct. I know that most times families choose a school like that and then you've got K through five, so you could very possibly have forty to fifty cars coming in there every morning at basically the same time. So I, I think that should be a consideration or responsibility of, to go along with the staff recommendation of approval to help take care of the traffic problem associated with that.
I would just say that, that traffic engineering, they did, the applicant did have to do a, a traffic study and traffic engineering reviewed it. They always review it, whether they trip any off-site improvement impacts, and they did not in this particular case, given the capacity that, that they're looking at.
Would you address the capacity issue again with the number of students? I'm hearing eighty-one, that I'm also hearing can be expanded. Could you, I know you've gone through it once before, but I may have zoned out.
Right. Eighty-one, basically, given the existing buildings that they're, that they're working with, we understand the state capacity will be eighty-one maximum of eighty-one students, and that's how it was analyzed in terms of impacts. So if they were to increase that, expand the building at some point in the future, if they were, the impacts would have to be revisited.
Stan, isn't that a reflection of square footage associated with this single building?
Right, a, a lot of it is.
For capacity allowance.
A lot of it is.
Is this school associated, we have one other Montessori schools. My kids have grown up, so I've lost track. Is this associated with the, the other school in town?
Are you speaking about community?
Is it community?
No.
Oh.
No, but I taught there years ago. I just wanted to make sure you understand.
We need your name and her.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sandy Hammack, twenty-six, twenty-five Atlantic Boulevard. And my mother and I are the owners of Treasure Coast Montessori. And this is our attempt to finally have our own building after seventeen years of teaching. The eighty-one that we got is from Children and Family Services, and they come to your building and measure it with a measuring tape, and they tell you exactly how many children you can have in that facility. So that's where it comes from. It is a law, and we have to follow that. So we couldn't have any more children than what they allow us and license us for.
The only thought I have for the neighbors, and, you know, everybody has their opinions, I guess, but I mean, there is another school close by this. It's Maitland Farms. It's on a dirt road. There is no decelerating lane, and I think it's bigger than this. And they, houses are all around it. And I don't know of any devaluation one way or the other, so.
Well, I, I respectfully would say that a dirt road traffic versus what I experienced on 8th Street.
Jet stream there?
Yes, sir. And it, it's quite a bit different. On top of that, there's a bus stop right across the street from this particular proposed facility, and that causes enough havoc, believe it or not, at seven fifteen in the morning, much less with these additional people. Thank you, by the way, for your, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sixty-two ninety-six 8th Street, two doors down from the proposed school. I, the whole area.
Name.
Name, Robert Marshbanks. And then there's eighteen acres behind Mr. Peterson's property and mine, and both of them are gonna be nursery and tree farms. The whole area is agricultural and extremely peaceful. And then the zoning is one unit per five acres, agricultural. And I really have a problem with the need to rezone a school into a residential and agricultural neighborhood when there is many more religious facilities all up and down, especially Kings Highway, with multiple acreage that would be able to allow this school to be able to expand to whatever capacity it may want to. I have a real problem trying to try and, you know, rezoning to put a school into a residential neighborhood.
Let's clarify something real quick here. We're not rezoning. This is a, a use permit, and so it has nothing to do with rezoning.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It may not be rezoning, but it's still changing the use, and that's what you're referring to.
Changing the use of the property. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Rhonda Thomas. My address is sixty-three ninety-five Seventh Lane. I'm here on behalf of my parents, and that's Max and Juanita Wiggins. They live at sixty-three forty-eighth Street, which is directly west of the property. I'm one street over off of 8th Street as well, so I, I understand the situation. I'm reading a letter that they sent me because they couldn't be here. My father's in the hospital with a heart condition, so I'm, I'm speaking on their behalf. We, the owners of the property of sixty-three forty-eighth Street, Vero Beach, Florida, would like to go on record that we strongly oppose the rezoning of the adjoining property at sixty-three twenty-eighth Street for the following reasons. The impact of additional traffic from a school would create a hazard for the traffic coming in and out of sixty-third Avenue and 8th Street. The property at sixty-three eight, sixty-three twenty-eighth Street is less than two acres, too small for a school. This is a quiet residential neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. Noise from a school would directly affect the quality of the neighborhood. A school next door will cause our property value to decrease. They did not receive the notice for this until yesterday, so that's why I had to get a, a quick email from them so that I could at least stand on, in on their behalf. And it would make a huge difference on property value in that area. Thank you.
We having problems with noticing?
For, for administrative permits, do we put in, we're not, require notice, do we?
Right, for administrative permit, they have the sign posting, like for anything that comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were surrounding property owner notices sent out for this in, in error, basically it's not a special exception use, but they did go out. And they went out after the sign was, was up, that the applicant put the sign up, I think, prior to TRC, if I remember right.
Okay.
February is that when it went up?
Hi, my name's James Thomas. I live at sixty-three ninety-five Seventh Lane there in Pine Tree Park. I'm also opposed to this Montessori school, school going in, the traffic on 8th Street. Nobody's taking into consideration Fifty-Eighth and 8th Street. You only have thirty seconds to get out the light at 8th Street and Fifty-Eighth. The county's not gonna change that anyway because of the traffic on that Kings Highway so bad. But the traffic going up and down 8th Street, the people fly up and down that road and, like I said, you almost get rear-ended. That school, if you put a six-foot buffer along with a ten-foot setback, the people that live behind there, they've gotta take, they're gonna have to move that fence and buffer so far over it. They won't have the designated space for parking in it, they're saying they are. The septic tank in the back, the fence and the buffer zone's gonna have to be sitting on top of that. It doesn't make any sense. That road going back to the property owners in the back is maybe ten foot wide, and the, and the fence for the property is sitting right up on that road. And I, like I said, it's, there's no reason to, to rezone our area out there from agricultural to, to allow a school in there. There's plenty of other areas in town on Fifty-Eighth Avenue that is set up, that they can buy the area and build a school. And I understand the county's in, in the future's planning on opening 8th Street straight out, so you're gonna have traffic coming and going down 8th Street continuously. So that's, that's gonna add to the impact with that school and the traffic that will come from Eighty-Second Avenue to cut up to Fifty-Eighth. It just, my opinion is, doesn't make sense to have it there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes.
Hello, my name's Amy Thoma. I live at seventeen sixty-nine Point West Way. I have a, a green consulting company here in Vero Beach, and my company has been providing consulting on this project pro bono for about a year. We've also worked with the mortgage companies who have been working with Ms. Sandy and Ms. Barbara to help them expand or to actually purchase their, their own property after seventeen years of providing a wonderful service in this county. We did originally try to purchase a property and construct a, a school, but with the financing that was available to them, we did an SBA loan, and it's all ready to go, but that prohibited us from doing a development project, so we had to find an existing building. And to find an existing building in commercial zoning that you can fit a reasonable amount of children in would be almost cost prohibitive. So that's why we had chosen this property. It's a beautiful, very peaceful site. There's lots of kids in the neighborhood. It's an opportunity for them, for them to even walk to school, which is a concept.
Please, let's refrain from that.
It would, it would be sad for me to think that we would be denying children, denying children opportunities to go to a wonderful school, to be taught by two wonderful people that have done this for almost twenty years because of issues of traffic. You know, we need to really think about, about these issues. Walkability issues, connectivity. I mean, it's, it's a huge, huge issue, and it's, it's a beautiful site. I think it's, it's a great project, and I'd love to see it go forward. My son went to the school. My niece goes to the school. It's, it's provided an awesome, awesome opportunity for them to succeed in life, and I'd like to see this project happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Larry Heagle. I live at sixty-three sixty, A Street, two doors to the west. I wanted to, Max and Juanita also sent me the email that their daughter read. But I wanted to point out some things. This is a very good stretch of the ordinance. I thought it's very creative from Joe. That's why he is my Jill and Joda, they're very good, they're my, I'm their clients on other developments. But what I want to point out, as Representative Greg Smith pointed out, you're under the assumption that it's K to five, is that correct?
I was.
Yes. Is that, what, what type of children are gonna be at the school? What are their ages?
Their ages eighteen months through kindergarten.
Okay, because when the sign was up, and I called and I talked to Karen Swanson, because we talked about my child, I have a special child, and that the Montessori school might have benefited him, he's a little old now. So that has changed because I talked to her, and it was gonna be up to eighth grade. And is that currently your?
No, we don't have elementary.
You do not have elementary?
No.
Okay, because, then my argument is worthless because ages six and above cannot, this, this part of the ordinance would not apply. But I wanted to point out that there hasn't been any communication. We got one letter in the mail. I believe that there is a real estate transaction that is pending on this change, that I think that that contract might possibly fall through because in order to purchase this property, the current owners aren't here to represent that, and they don't, they probably want it to be approved, but I think that there is some financial gain for individuals and to do this. I absolutely can tell you that there are people doing seventy, eighty, ninety miles an hour on that road from Fifty-Eighth down to Sixty-Six. So if you would stand there, go watch, I don't know what kind of traffic study, you did a traffic count, not necessarily the speed, I think that you, if you were to approve this, you would slow this down, this area to thirty miles an hour. Also, I have a grave, great concern for the school bus stop. I have two children that stand in front of sixty-third, right in front of this area. You're gonna have high schoolers, middle schoolers, and elementary kids standing at sixty-third. There's a lot of kids at Pine Tree Park, and this increased traffic is, will be a hindrance to their safety, just standing in front of any other preschool, especially clients that are late to work, trying to get their kids in and out in a hurry, and not seeing the other children walking from, along A Street to the bus stop. So I'm all in favor of a deceleration lane, because just stand there. I challenge you, before you do this, table this and go out there and watch, people that are speeding down that road. So I absolutely oppose this. I think it will devalue. And what other kind of uses could this, let's say the school doesn't go through, what else can you do administrative permits, administrative approval allow for?
You have to ask staff that.
Kennel? Kennel?
Right, ag zoning, there's a lot of things you could do. There's agricultural activities, churches are permitted uses in ag, and I don't have the, the rest of the book memorized.
Administrative, like kennels, I mean.
But they have their own criteria, that's right.
That administrative?
Yes, it's administrative permit use.
But I mean, administrative permits, as I understood them, were specific to a use. If we, if we did an administrative permit for this tonight, they could quit and go do something else without coming back.
That's correct. That's, that's correct. That's correct. And just in, just in general, one of the criteria that you'll see in ag districts as well as residential for these kinds of uses, whether it's schools or churches or what have, is to be off of a major thoroughfare so that you don't mix necessarily, you know, local residential traffic with it. But you do, you do tend to see these along, along major roadways, and 8th Street is. Can't speak to the, to the speeding practices out there, certainly.
That's another.
You tend to get that on, on more rural areas until they get more urban.
It's absolutely the wrong thing to do in that area.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else from the public? Joe?
Joe, can I, but before staff, what was, when staff came up with the type C buffer versus, you know, we generally sometimes go to higher buffers, what was the reasoning for that instead of a B? Is, is there a space?
It's actually a condition, administrative use permit condition, I think, isn't it? Stan?
Yes, it's one of the nine, it's one of the nine-seven-one criterion.
That says C, correct? Because I didn't read it. Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Hi, my name is Joseph Schulke. Schulke Villanostada, and I'm the engineer of record for this project. And I want to talk to us a little bit about it and possibly discuss some of the concerns that some of the residents had here tonight. Larry, who I do work for, maybe he helped me with my argument with traffic. As he said, there is a lot of kids in Pine Tree Park. A lot of kids, they're not only school age kids, but there's kids that are eighteen months to kindergarten. Now, if those children aren't staying in this neighborhood, they're driving ten miles down the road to another daycare center. So are we really reducing traffic? We're moving traffic from one area to the other, but in some cases, we're actually reducing traffic on the street, not sending traffic down A Street to some other facility for these people in this neighborhood. It's a pretty big neighborhood, can go right here. Traffic goes eighty miles per hour. It's, it's a shame that that happens, and, and Larry said this would slow it to thirty. It would be great probably to see this traffic slow down a little bit, not that this would cause that to happen, but anything to reduce anyone from going eighty mile per hour would be a benefit. As far as backing up traffic, it's not gonna happen, you know, if you've got thirty peak hour trips, and some are coming from the east, some from the west, you're not having many trips, maybe a trip per minute, a couple trips per minute turning in. We're not backing up traffic. We have an unloading zone and a long driveway. There's a huge queuing area within the site, and unloading zone is way in the back towards the house. So we're not gonna be backing up traffic into the, into the street, if you will, in A Street. There's a large driveway, a round unloading area, so that should not be a concern.
Joe, what is the stacking area internal to the site?
There is approximately a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty feet to get to the unloading zone. Actually, that's to our property line, so about a hundred and eighty feet of driveway.
Is that about ten cars?
Yeah.
Yeah. And as they go, they continue, and then it loops all the way around, so, you know, that's a significant stacking area.
Is a deceler, is the, you feel the decelerating lane is onerous?
I, I don't believe it's necessary.
There's a difference in necessary and onerous.
Careful, careful.
Do you think that they, I mean, is that something you just don't think they, you don't think they need it, but any, they can't handle that? You can't?
I don't think.
Break the project.
I'm not gonna say there's any site that couldn't benefit from a turn lane, you know, when the county decides that they wanna make turn lanes mandatory for every driveway, then probably it's a safer place for everybody. But I think there's a reason we picked a threat. But I think there's a reason we picked a threshold and as far as our clients concerned, it's a huge financial threshold too. They're trying to make this work. They've been in the business for 17 years. They're trying to establish the business somewhere else and it's a stretch financially for them. And as you know, a right turn lane is...
Onerous.
Okay.
Short answer is yes.
As far as the site itself, you know, if you took a look at it, look at the architecturals, we've kept the residential character of this site as best we could and I think we did a very good job. The buildings are still going to look like residential houses. The circular drive looks just like a residential circular drive. They're one way, they're a little bit narrower. We're putting landscaping around the parking area as well, a hedge to hide it. We've got the type C buffer around the rec areas in the back and along A Street. We've also have worked with Inver County and we've dedicated 30 foot of right away. So we don't have the fence, it's not going to be right at A Street like the one gentleman had mentioned. It'll most likely be pulled back. And although not showing my plans, I just noticed that when we were here, we'll have to pull the fence back because, you know, the right away line is moving back 30 feet from the property. So you won't have that fence right on the property line or right on the road as he identified before.
Is the fence going to be right, I mean, there seems to be some concern about the fence being on the property line going north and on this north end along the west road there. The fence, I mean, looking at your plans, I can't tell whether the fence needs to move or not.
There's an existing fence around the whole property right now.
And that's coming down?
It's coming down along the entire back and being pulled back 10 feet for the type C buffer and along the sides where rec areas are. It's remaining on the other sides at the property line.
On the east and west, but I...
Yes, sir.
That's not the way it's worded in...
Yeah, I mean, they're talking about a type C buffer around the whole property, aren't they?
Yeah.
So you're going to have to move the fence. And that was why I'm asking. It looks to me like you have to move the fence all the way completely.
Yeah, it was not my recommendation. I can ask, maybe staff can clarify that.
It says clearly here.
Yeah, we're specifically showing on the plans, moving the fence back around all the rec areas, around the rear and the side. And we're also moving the fence back along the front. There's a type C buffer there, so it'll be in the back. So we're not only moving the property line, just moving 30 feet for additional right away dedication, then the fence is moving, has to move 10 foot beyond that. So the fence along these streets is actually going to be moved about 40 feet from the street, from where it is now.
I mean, my impression and the way I'm reading it, not thinking myself, is that fence has got to move along the whole property line. Joe?
That's the way it reads in the...
So...
Is that it, Joe?
No, I was just going to mention, Mr. Heagle mentioned something about financial gain. He's probably going to sell his house one day too and I'm sure he's not going to sell it for a loss, you know. It's the society we live in.
We can all smile about that.
Bob Marshbanks again. I have a quick question. When I built my home two doors to the east, the county had 135-foot Murphy right away in front of the house that we had to negotiate down to 105 feet of county right away in order to build my home. So I wonder if that same Murphy right away is continuing down and he has less right away in front of his place than he thinks.
I don't know the answer to that. There is no Murphy Act on that property.
No, it's not subject to Murphy Act, this particular piece of property.
The county has purchased, the county has purchased the first 30 feet already. Okay, anybody else from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion.
Excuse me, I would like to state also that most of this traffic is going to be coming from the east to the west. There's not going to be much of it coming from the west because it's a dirt road. The dirt road ends at 66. I mean, the paved road ends at 66 and becomes a dirt road. And most of the people in Pine Tree Park live in affordable homes. Whether they can afford Montessori school or not is questionable. And I still don't think this is a good idea to put this school here. They're just jamming it up. We never heard that they were going to put 81 students in this school and they put a sign out for two weeks, a small sign. It was like a foot by a foot that said it was going to be rezoned to commercial. And I feel that that's going to be one...
Let's clarify this real quick. This is not a rezoning.
Well, I feel like this is one change that may lead to many changes that I don't feel the residents want. Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Sue Marshbanks at 6296 A Street. I have no problem with Montessori. My children went to Montessori over 30 years ago. I have a problem with commercial business being run out of a quiet, country, residential, agricultural area. I was born in this building and have worked in this community over a lot of years. It took us until just this year to build that brand new, beautiful home on A Street in a quiet area. And now there's a proposal to put a business one door away from us. That's my problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. One more.
My name is Karen Swanson. I live at 10408 East Polo Grounds Drive. I'm also, Amy and I have been working with the Treasure Coast Montessori School for over a year. And some of the people who have spoken tonight have actually misquoted. I never told anybody it was eighth grade. A lot of people who did call me, I told exactly what was happening there. These kids are preschoolers. They're not going to be out running around. They're not going to cause a lot of problems in anybody's neighborhood. And I really believe this is a very good use for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, discussion up here.
I have something that I would like to run through the scenario. And I'm hearing two women who have just put their heart and their soul, you know, the last two years of their lives trying to get this working. But I'm also hearing that we're dealing with 18-month, age of 18 months to about four, four or five. All right, so a parent drives in, we've got stacking for maybe 10 cars. The parent stops in front of the school, mom gets out of the car, goes to the back, unstraps the child from the seat, closes the door, takes a child in the diaper bag and everything else inside. Now, we've got 10 cars doing this. We only have room for 10 cars and we've got a school for 81 children. There doesn't seem to be enough of a stacking area here without having a decel lane or some other place for these vehicles to go for, to accommodate the traffic in this. And tell me how this is, what I'm seeing is not the way it's going to work.
Well, it won't be where they're pulling up and they're getting their children out. They're going to pull in and there'll be two staff members getting their children out for them so they can move on. That's how we, that's how we're going to be doing it. That's how we did it at our other. Yeah, and we have different times that we come. We have early morning children that come at 7:30. We have other children that come at 8:30. We have children that leave at 12, leave at 3:30 and leave at 5:30. So there's staggered different times that they arrive and leave.
And how many parents do you have picking up children at 5:30?
Currently where we are now, we have about 12 parents that have their children there that late.
And how many students do you have in your school now?
In the school where we are now, this year we had 55.
And how many parents do you have dropping off children in the morning?
In early morning, we have about nine. The children that stay till 3:30, there's probably about 30 children that stay till 3:30, so they're coming at 8:30.
And they come, about 30 coming in at 8:30?
8:30, yeah. And they have up till 9 o'clock to drop off because school starts promptly at 9.
Oh, okay.
So they'll be in, you know, they'll have like a 30-minute time there where they're pulling in and we're getting the children out and they're moving on.
How many parking places do you have?
And that goes by the 81 children. We had to have 12, so they take, how many children you're allowed to have and then you have to have so many staff per those children.
And you have...
We had to have 12 parking spaces for the 81 children plus the staff that that requires.
How many, how much staff cars will you have there?
We will have, I think we had to have one and a half or two parking spaces per staff and we have six staff members.
So nine for staff.
Greg. Greg.
Greg.
Greg. From a practical standpoint, with your experience in schools, a decel lane, I know you brought this up, but I mean, with a decel lane would hold, how many cars? Six? Five? Six?
Pretty many. Four, maybe.
I mean, I'm just wondering what the impact of a decel lane and overall, how much the decel lane matters in the end. I mean, how do you perceive that?
Well, knowing that, kind of the way traffic is on 8th and 4th out in those areas, and I can, I can see that the finances have already been set, Sandy, without any consideration, just costs too much. But I really think a deceleration lane would really help that situation because she's got a split of when parents are going to come in there, but, you know, as people that live out there have said, there's a great amount of speed associated with that road and, you know, you have kids driving in an area. I just think it would be better if there were opportunity. I think it would be better for our clients as well as for the general...
Instead of putting out a Montessori school sign, if they throw out a big sign that says "Newtis Colony," I promise you the speed will slow down.
Well, the drive, the turnoff would be nice. That'd be nice to have, but we can't require it by the codes. They've already complied with all the codes. It's not a requirement. We can't really impose it. I mean, it'd be nice to have, but a lot of things would be nice to have. If we had a pull-off for them, we'd have to have a turn lane for every other permit we ever put out.
I'm for that.
I am too, but the code doesn't have it. We just can't condemn them for, they've jumped through the hoops again. I use this term all the time. Legally, they're entitled to do what they're doing. I'm going to support them.
Any other comments? Motion?
I move to adopt as presented by staff.
I'll second. With one clarification, just to be sure, there's no question, we're talking about a type C buffer on all four sides and the fence moved.
That's what we, yeah.
I mean, it's the way we read it and I'm just telling, I'm just making it clear that that's what we're talking about.
Well, I don't think it's appropriate for this area.
I'm having a hard time with this one as well. I feel also that it's not appropriate. I just, I know you don't like kids.
Actually, no.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you, if it's not going to be the will of this board to approve it, you really need to sort of state forth the conditions for why you're not approving it and what your objections are and you might need to really sort of reference the list of the requirements of 4th and 971.28 and pick out which one exactly that you find difficulties with. I just think it's going to get problematic if you just sort of reject at hand administrative permit use without clarification for why you're objecting to it.
Yeah, this is one of those tough decisions that we have to make and it has to be based on rules, regulations and laws. I certainly have compassion for people that have chosen to live in that area in the quiet, peaceful manner that they're living there, but at the same time, it's a growth community and the allowances are such that this is a condition that can be allowed administratively in an agricultural area. And these people have applied in good faith and I know that a deceleration lane would be just at their will if they could afford to do something like that, which they obviously can't. It's just, we have to follow rules and regulations as far as I'm concerned.
I support it. I think for the reasons given, if I all had behind.
These are just difficult balances, but it is a permitted use on the bottom line. While she's looking at that for staff, if this were to fail, what would be the options? Would the applicant have an option of going to the Board of County Commissioners?
Right, any decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners within a given period of time that's spelled out in the LDRs.
Well, I think I can count the votes, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's four. All opposed?
Aye. And since...
You need to find what your opposition to is and theirs.
I think it's compatibility.
Mr. Glenn was...
Well, it's, I mean, it's passed forward too. It's not really necessary at this point. You're more than welcome to, but I don't see...
You're off the hook.
In other words, I don't have to do it now?
No.
Okay.
If you had won, then I would have liked for you to have done it.
Okay, let's take a break here. Good idea.
I'd like to give you all just a little bit of context about temporary use permits. I don't think you all, you may not have ever seen one that I, that I can remember that's, that's come up. It's a staff level type of permit that's reviewed and issued. And we have temporary use permits for a lot of different kinds of uses. In regard to residential properties, they tend to be construction trailers inside of platted neighborhoods on local roads. And the same with sales offices and, and model homes. The particular site that we're talking about is in the Polo Grounds neighborhood. This is an aerial showing, uh, 12th Street going east and west here. Seventy-fourth Avenue over to the right would be to the east. Uh, much further over to the west would be Eighty-second Avenue. And the Polo Grounds subdivision is a very southern extreme kind of peninsula part of Point West. It is its own separate subdivision, has its own separate association and plat. Uh, but it was part of the overall Point West project, which is further to the north. And you can see, uh, the town center then actually all the way up to State Road sixty, just to give you kind of the, the big picture context. But the subject of the appeal is a, uh, real estate sales office trailer located on one of the lots, platted in the subdivision. You can see the platted lots and the essentially circular roadway, uh, that goes with this development. A large common area for polo events and equestrian events here in the middle sort of the subdivision. Um, practice areas over to the east and then more facilities down off this page to the south. The subject site is one of the lots in the subdivision and near the entrance off of 12th Street. And that is a site of a real estate, uh, sales trailer that apparently has been there for a number of years. Uh, several years ago, the, um, subdivision was platted and so the sales office may have been there for, for quite some time. And again, the county regulations allow for a limited amount of time, sales office type of operations. It's normal to have those at the beginning of a project. Um, there are several rules that go along with allowing, uh, these types of facilities in residential neighborhoods. Uh, there are time limits, especially for trailers. Um, and there's also a criterion that the, uh, the sales office has to be related to the sale of ten contiguous lots, uh, specifically in, in the code. In this particular situation, now maybe I'll go back and to, to the aerial itself. This aerial's, um, a little more than a year old, but I think it'll, it'll illustrate a little bit of what's, what's going on in the subdivision itself. This, the, uh, the sales trailer site is up here. And that is that with this particular subdivision, it's not a large subdivision and, and it doesn't take too many lot sales for there to not be ten contiguous lots anymore. In, in regard to the temporary use permit application that staff reviewed, that was one of the criterion that has, must be met in order for the permit, uh, to be issued. Uh, staff informed the applicant that it didn't meet, uh, the circumstances don't meet the ten contiguous lot criterion and staff denied, uh, the permit. And, um, uh, since you've been dealing with, with Dolph Kell, uh, on behalf of, um, the Polo Grounds LLC and, uh, he was informed of, of that decision in writing and he's appealed staff's determination. And I think just to kind of, uh, cut through it all, there are four review criteria for determining, uh, if staff acted appropriately. Those are spelled out in the land development regulations and it's in your staff report. They regard, in regard to procedures, did staff act arbitrarily or capriciously? Did we consider the effects, uh, of the proposal on surrounding properties and other impacts? And did we fail to evaluate the application with respect to the conference of plan and the LDRs? Um, as we've indicated in the staff's report, we don't believe we failed in any of these areas in making this decision. We kind of went through that in the report. Um, I think the contention of the, uh, the appellant is that, um, the ten contiguous lot criterion to him does not make sense in this particular case. And that may be a policy issue. It may be an issue for whether or not the LDRs are, are, are appropriate or could be changed, uh, in some other manner. And that's another discussion, which we'd be glad to enter into, uh, in regard to policy. But I don't think there's actually an argument about the fact that it doesn't meet one of the clear criteria. Uh, given that staff, actually, it's our position, we don't have the authority to grant a, a permit that doesn't meet that. Um, and so, um, staff's recommendation is really twofold. One is that the Planning and Zoning Commission make a finding that staff did not fail in any of those four areas of, of review and, um, make a finding that staff's determination, actually deny the appeal and affirm staff's decision, uh, and to deny the temporary use permit application. Be glad to go over any of the items that you have. Uh, we, we do put this on as a public discussion item because there is notice to surrounding property owners by, by regular mail and there may be some neighbors that wish to speak as well.
Stan, what is, uh, staff's opinion about at least what I'm seeing the arguments from Dolph are? Do you feel that he's valid or, I mean, I, I realize where you guys are at, so...
Right, it's, it's, the ten contiguous lots has actually been in previous ordinances for quite some time and at, at this point, this is the first time we've kind of come up against this. We, we tend to have more of these sales type of operations in the larger subdivisions where you, where you have different phases and so forth. Uh, and I think the ten contiguous lots, one of the purposes for it in there is to make sure that there's a limited amount of time that there's actually a sales office, you know, in a residential neighborhood because of what, you know, at what point is it a normally operating residential neighborhood without a sales office? Why not just stick for sales signs and a real estate sign and have them call somebody if they come through? So I think that, that the, the object, that's the objective, that's the purpose. And there may be other ways to do it, but it certainly, I think, has, has the effect of having these kinds of sales offices out of, especially I would say smaller subdivisions, probably earlier than they would be otherwise.
Well, it's, I mean, what we're really talking about here is, is a formula again and we go back and forth on formulas all the time. Uh, but is it...
Huh? They all work.
They all work? Is it reasonable to, I, I mean, let me, let me go through the, the, the mechanics of this. If they had put the trailer in and gotten the temporary use permit initially, then at the point that there were no longer ten contiguous lots, they're required to remove it? Is that the way it works?
Yes, it's a trailer and actually if you look at the other criteria, if they would have come in back when the subdivision was platted for, for trailers that aren't modulars, and I don't know if this is a modular or a trailer. If it's a trailer, a mobile home and defined and categorized that way, there's, it's, it's only allowed to be there twelve months and then one three-month extension. So there's actually a shorter timeframe for what's an honest to goodness, well, honest to goodness is a mobile home or classified as a mobile home. Modular's and permanent offices can go on for longer. But then the only real timeframe, you know, anything that limits timeframe after that is the ten contiguous slots is essentially the way it works.
At what point in time do you, did the ten contiguous slots fail? Do you know?
In this particular case, I, I don't know because we didn't get the application in until this last couple of months ago.
Any other questions?
If, if he, if...
Now, don't turn that on, you're better with...
Light him up. If he, if they, if, if he's, if we think he's valid in these smaller subdivisions in the timeframe, in this case, just looking at it, if, if you have contiguous, if those lots, if contiguous is defined as common property and lots, rather than lot to lot, he would still have over ten lots. Or is there a percent, would we be better off as a percentage rather than a fixed number?
You could, there's more than one way to meet the purpose. You're right.
But I mean, but in this case, and, you know, and I do believe technically he's in violation of the way the rule is written and I think, don't think he really would probably argue with that, but I think he's, what he's looking at is common sense based on the amount of sales that are out there versus the timeframe it may take to sell out what would be a normal percentage in a bigger lot that would have, where you got down to ten, a bigger subdivision where you got down to ten. I'm just wondering if, if he goes to an LDR, you know, if we, say we deny this tonight, he goes to the LDR process, you know, and, and whatnot. Is that, what, I mean, what, what alternative does he have? It's easy for us to say, okay, he's out of, the rules are off, but the, the sales office is in place. It's landscaped, I mean, it's, it's not a hideous looking thing. And the neighbors may be tired of it, you know, they, um, it's been out there a while. But I mean, does he get a year, two years to convert into another building? Or, or, you know, something like a model home for sales or, or what? I mean, is that then, is he still in violation if it's a sales office at all?
Yeah, model homes are allowed and they...
But that's not going to happen in overnight. So I mean, tomorrow morning, if he's denied, then now what do we, can we, in a, can we say there's a three-year? He has, so there's a time certain or how does that happen?
Right, here, here's a couple of alternatives, what have you. You all make a decision, um, tonight and that decision could be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, if it's, if this, the, the permit denial is upheld through that process and the trailer continues there, it'd be code enforcement issue. And at that point in time, uh, code enforcement would look at the circumstances and set a time for compliance. And if the applicant were coming through for a land development regulation amendment that might change the rules so they be in compliance, the code enforcement board might take that into consideration in setting a compliance date. But it would be an issue for them to look at. It's the kind of issues they, they look at quite a bit.
So if we uphold your, your decision here though, is he going to have to move that trailer tomorrow? Are you giving some leeway?
He would certainly be welcome, I'm sure, to move it, but he, we would not, we're not going to be out there with guns and...
You just expect that as soon as possible to be...
Right, it becomes a code enforcement issue if it's, if he doesn't get a permit for it, right.
I, I have a question. Are you finished, Greg? Uh, when, um, a developer has a subdivision and then he puts up a sales office like this and he sells out his lots, he takes the trailer down. Now, can you tell me how many of these lots out there are still owned by the original developer?
Or just haven't been built on, is that what you're getting at?
No.
I think that was stated in the backup.
I can't find it. Could you, could you answer a few questions for me, sir? How many of the lots are still? Two, only two lots?
Only directly by, by the applicant, yes.
Who's the applicant?
The Polo Grounds, the original developer. The, but there are, there are almost a majority that are owned by builders who have come into the neighborhood. It's a custom home community, so again, it's a little different than a production home. We, we sell the lots, the builders build on the lots. And so we're representing those builders in selling their homes and in getting their homes sold that they build. So there's, there's kind of a joint venture arrangement there between...
Dolph...
Okay, so what you're doing is resales.
You need to state your name and address real quick.
Dolph Kell, uh, fifteen ninety-nine Grace Wood Lane, president of the Polo Grounds. So there, there are some resales and there are some original developer sales.
Okay, so when the developer comes in and he puts up the sales office, once he's sold out his lots, he takes a sales office and goes away. So now you, the developer only really has two lots in there. The rest are all resales. So you have a real estate office doing resales.
It, it is a...
It's not a developer's office?
As I read the, that's correct, that's correct. And as I read that section on sales trailers, I don't think that's prohibited. And, and we, the situation could be such that we didn't sell them to the builders and we just held them in inventory and waited for the builders to build on them. But yes, the reality of it is, is that, and, and we have exclusive builders there. So we have sold to the builders and those builders are then waiting to have either spec homes sold that we're marketing for them or end users build on those lots.
Okay, now, gentlemen, staff, help me with this. Normally, when a sales office is put up, that is for the use of the developer until he sells out his project, correct? It's not a resales office or is it? I'm not sure.
Well, and I think Dolph is correct. The ordinance speaks to the marketing or sale of ten or more lots or units, which are contiguous. It doesn't distinguish between what you might call resales or the first sale or what have you there. And it's, it's not, um, it's not addressed one way or the other in the code. So it could, could be resales.
Dolph, would you be willing to, uh, look at an LDR change and do the work that's necessary? Dolph, would you be willing to look at an LDR change and do the work that's necessary to put that forward?
The, the second part, I'm not sure of, what's, I don't know what the work that is necessary is.
I think staff can tell you that, but, I think...
I'm certainly, I'm open to that, I do think, and I'll, I don't know if now's the time to talk or later, I do think there is an opportunity to discuss the specifics of this case. I understand staff's interpretation, I think there are some other possible interpretations that I'd at least like to explore tonight. Failing that, I do think there are some, you know, I'd like to address our specific case, but I do think there are some global issues or county-wide issues related specifically to smaller subdivisions, that the way this is crafted, it discriminates against smaller subdivisions, and it was probably drafted really in light of big developments, and so, I, I think there is a, there's kind of a gap here.
I think staff clearly says that.
And, and so, not knowing what's involved in directing an LDR, in theory, I'm open to that. Somebody could explain to me what that involves.
It's painful, Dolph, it's...
Yeah, it's real painful. Any other discussion up here?
Yes, sir.
Let's open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak?
We were wondering when you were going to pounce. Pounce, pounce.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission on Planning and Zoning, my name is Ira Hatch with the firm Hatch and Duddy, we're representing the Point West Master Homeowners Association. We're not here really to speak for or against the appeal, but I did want to bring it to your attention that, under the master declaration of covenants and restrictions, which applies to all of Point West development, including this development, commercial use on lots is not an allowed use. We do have certain commercial areas, there's the town center area, and there's an area out by State Route 60 where commercial use is an appropriate use, and there are some trailers, and some of the commercial property out by 60 now are not trailers, but modules. The, we also allow uses of models and sales from models for builders who want to sell their, their particular product from a model. We do not, and the covenants do prohibit the use of a lot, and lots would include the lots in this particular project, a use of a lot for a commercial use other than if it was being used for a model, so I did want to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
I guess one comment there, is that this particular development, I don't think you're going to find a model home in this development, these are all going to be custom homes.
In, in the Polo Club, I can agree with you, and the rest of Point West, you, you do have a model development.
Sure. Dolph?
Briefly, in, in response to Mr. Hatch's point, and then I had some general points. Actually, it's, it's interesting to hear that interpretation. The way the Point West master development is set up is that there is a master covenants and restrictions, and the master covenants and restrictions specifically contemplates that there will be sub-associations, and the Polo Grounds is a sub-association with its own rules and regulations, of which Point West Master Association did sign off on, on the bottom of those sub-associations, and in those documents, it specifically says that, that there is a, there is a prohibition of commercial activity on residential lots, but that the developer's sales activities do not constitute commercial activity. It's the same reason that they have sales trailers at Point West, and, and so, anyway, that is specifically addressed and actually agreed to and signed off on by Point West in the master documents. But that, that aside, what I'd like, and I'll, I'll be brief, because I think we're kind of covering most of the issues here, I think the key thing here, a couple of things, are to, to think about the intent of the regulations, and I think we have a specific instance tonight, and we've got a bigger issue. I'd, I'd like to try to focus on our specific instance, but maybe we'll have to go beyond that. At the Polo Grounds, and, and the concept is, we, we know that trailers need to be gone at some point in the development. I don't want a trailer there forever, I don't want a trailer there anywhere close to build out, but the reality of it is, we're nowhere close to build out. There are six, as I count them, residents living in the Polo Grounds right now. One of those residence's home is for sale, so we're far from build out using that analysis. There are 12 rooftops in the Polo Grounds on 46 lots, seven of those 12 are for sale. We're far from build out. There are 24 lots that are collectively represented between the developer, our builders, and investors that are for sale through that office, so over half of the neighborhood is for sale through that office, and I've got letters from those four people, I won't belabor reading them into the record right now, but there, we do have a, an affirmative desire to keep that trailer from more than half of the neighborhood. Now, you do have a balance here, Mr. Fletcher pointed that out in the earlier matter, and, and it is a balance, and I'm sure that there are residents who don't want the trailer there, or we wouldn't be here tonight, and they're entitled to their opinion, and their opinion's valid, but it, it's a balancing act, and I strongly feel that where we are at this point in the project is in the early, we're still in the selling phase, we're not at the build-out phase. So, I think leaving the trailer is consistent with the intent. Now, we get to the language of, well, what does the, what does the statute say? Are there 10 contiguous lots? If there were 10 lots in a row, we wouldn't be here, we'd all agree that's contiguous. But the way the statute defines contiguous, next to, abutting or touching, and having a boundary or portion thereof which is co-terminus, I think you could argue that the fact that all these homes front on a commonly-owned community park in the middle, are they not, it's a technical interpretation, but it, you know, I don't understand the contiguous to begin with, so I'm grappling out a way to try to, you know, understand what it means, and, and I think that that's a possibility. The other thing, and we've talked about the bigger issue of, does this discriminate against smaller subdivisions as opposed to larger? As staff's report listed, they say that there's four prongs that we should be looking at here. I don't disagree with them on the first prong. On the second prong, whether it is, they said whether staff was arbitrary and capricious. I would not say that staff was arbitrary and capricious at all. I would, however, say that a liberal, a literal interpretation of this provision is arbitrary and capricious, because it does, in fact, discriminate for no reason whatsoever against a small subdivision as opposed to a larger. So, I do think there is an opportunity to find that on point number two, there, there was an error. And on point number three, did staff fail to consider adequately the effects of surrounding properties? They certainly considered them, I don't think they knew at that time that there is over half of the neighborhood that does need and want that sales trailer there. I know there are people who don't, but in considering adequately the effects on surrounding properties, the fact that there are a lot of lots that want that trailer, I think is an important balance. So, in conclusion, I, I think that we could meet the definition, I know that we meet the intent, and I think that there is the opportunity, using your discretion, to avoid that arbitrary and capricious result that would happen if the trailer had to be removed right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question of Dolph. And this was brought up by somebody, and the, the question was not pursued. Since these are resales, why aren't they just with an MLS listing and a sign on the property?
Well, they, they are with an MLS listing, I mean, I do, they are listed in the MLS, but it is certainly, from, from the seller's standpoint, more, it is preferred to have the trailer at the entrance where people can come in, learn about the neighborhood. Again, because there are multiple builders, it's also difficult to set up shop, you know, I represent all three builders. If I set up shop in one builder's house, does that mean he's the best builder and the other builders aren't? So, there's, there are challenges to that, but, but there is, they are in the MLS, they, that, that does happen, but certainly, if the, if the code allows us to, we would want, and the builders would want, and anybody investing and who would want to be selling their lots, or, I shouldn't say anyone, many of those people want to have the trailer there to assist in that activity. And, and again, at some point in the future, clearly, the trailer doesn't make sense.
All right, I have one other question also. Do you sell out of that trailer only those lots in that subdivision, or do you do other real estate sales from that trailer?
In the past, I had done some sales on other things, and in reading the code, I didn't realize until recently that there is a prohibition on that. Now, the code said that, and again, I did, at the time, I didn't know that, one, I didn't know you're not supposed to, two, I didn't know there was even a section on it. When I went back and looked at the section, though, it says, non, it gets back to contiguous again, there, there was a development to the south that the same developer developed that was contiguous, and another neighborhood next to that, so, we might have been covered. At the time, I didn't know whether we were or weren't supposed to do that, that activity is not ongoing, those developments are done, and so, if that, if that's an issue or a point of clarification, I can make sure that, you know...
So, you're not doing any other business out of that office, except the sale of those lots within that, within the Polo Grounds?
And if, and if that's, if that's a point, after reading the statute and understanding from staff, that we need to clarify, then I'll, I'll make sure to, to be in accord with that.
Thank you.
How many, when do you think you would leave?
I would like to have left a long time ago.
Oh, well, when do you think it'd be fair for, for you to leave? Have you indicated...
Well, I, I guess it kind of gets back to the question of, if, 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 if the word contiguous wasn't in there, or if we decided that, you know, the, that my interpretation is the wrong interpretation of contiguous...
Though, when do you interpret that you would leave?
I'm saying, if, if there were 10 lots, when would there no longer be 10 lots for sale? At, at the rate we're going right now, it'd be a few years.
I mean, do you, can you put it down to lots? Or, or buildings, or families, or what, how, how are you, how are we going to decide?
Well, I mean, I guess I would say, if, if it weren't for the word contiguous, we would leave per the statute when there were 36...
Sold.
Sold.
Okay.
Time and determine.
And, and I mean, that would be, that would be the, the extreme. We may find that we either want to or choose to leave earlier than that, but, again, we're, it's, it's well into the future, so at this point, I haven't really grappled with what the, what the number is. I know that we're, I know that we're years away from that at the current sales pace.
Dolph, it sounds like we're kind of balancing between the sales of Polo Grounds and, and then other, maybe real estate, and I need, we've got a letter up here from Don Studley, and, you know, there's maybe conflicting real estate sales issues as well, but I, that's why I'm kind of wondering, I think they were asking about the developer and a sales office for the, the development, and if, and, and, you know, that's what I was alluding to, whether, if this was denied, I mean, is there a way to, you know, is there a timeframe that you would feel reasonably comfortable with? I mean...
Well, again, the, the outside sales...
That's going away, that's...
If they, even if they weren't allowed in the past, and I'm not certain, but assuming they weren't allowed, I can assure you and make, you know, make it clear that now that I know too, that, that that wouldn't be happening. The Polo, again, just looking at the Polo Grounds, though, there's still, you know, there are, there are only five people living there right now that aren't for sale.
What's the total lots?
Forty-six. So, it's, again, we're not even, we're not even remotely close to what the build-out, what the, what the fully occupied neighborhood, and I'm not saying it's fully, but, you know, we're not even close to half sold out, so, I, I just think that it's still appropriate in the grand scheme of things for that trailer to operate. I think that it's still part of the balance at this stage of the game.
Does the contiguous, oh, I mean, if he's got these places listed with houses and lots, is it the ownership, and you defined contiguous in our LDRs, if I remember, so...
Yes, contiguous in the LDRs, it really has kind of two clauses to it, next to, abutting or touching, and having a boundary which is co-terminus, so, I, I don't, don't think he meets that.
So, by chain, by doing what they did, where they sold to different builders, that's what's over, has thrown them out? Even though he may be selling and have an agreement with that builder to sell the package?
The 10 contiguous was an easy decision, determination to make, and that knocked them out of the box. We haven't even, as I kind of alluded to earlier, we haven't gotten into the issue of, there's a total of 15 months in the current code if it's a trailer.
Right.
Because, as you all know, we generally don't allow trailers in single-family residential districts, only temporarily, so there's a timeframe involved in that, too.
Jerry?
Jerry Swanson, 1048 East Polo Grounds Drive. As you may well imagine, I'm quite passionate about this project, and I want to tell you, it's the nicest place in Indian River County to live, and I can't for the life of me understand why there's only five of us out there living. I've got some theories about it, but those are my theories. I, I can't tell you strongly enough that this is a gentleman, a developer, who is an attorney and a real estate broker, and an intelligent person, who never applied for a temporary use permit, ever, until about two or three weeks ago. Told us, the people that live there, that he had the right to have the trailer there. We knew that that was not true, but, be that as it may, what he says is true. There are two lots that haven't sold. The rest of them have sold to investors, to builders. Some of them, when, when we bought, there was a two-year timeframe that you had to build in. That two-year timeframe has been relaxed, obviously, because there is no market, and we certainly understand that. But, this could, as, as an owner, we can see this going on for 10 years. I mean, there's no timeframe at all that's realistic at this point, and that's a big concern of ours. To not understand that you can't use this for a general office, real estate office, really befuddles me, because, you know, I can tell you all of the projects that he's selling out of here, unless he just stopped this in the last 24 hours or 48 hours. I like Dolph, I really do, and I love the Polo Grounds, but I think it's abusive the way he's handled this, and I think if you allow him to have a permit at this point of time, you're setting a precedent that you don't want to set in this county. Thank you.
Wait a minute, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got a situation where we think that maybe he's, maybe we agree, maybe we don't, but, and, and do we stand him up against the fire, the wall and shoot him with a firing squad, or do you set a time certain? I mean, is it the, the sales office is, that appearance that is annoying, is it the operation in the sales office? I mean, this, all this comes to a point at sometimes, so what is your solution?
Well, I think a time certain is, is definitely, I mean, I, I don't think you could expect him to move it overnight, and I don't think there's anybody that would be unreasonable, but to think that it's going to be there another year or two years, when, we don't control that, the homeowners out there don't control that.
Well, that's what I, my point, though, is if he's got to convert now to a mobile, a model home, I mean, there's a construction time, I mean, there's all, there's a lag time there, if, if that's what he decided to do, if this is denied, that's why, I mean, I, I really felt that there was, in the midst of this, we ought to figure out something...
Well, I don't, I don't buy the statement that, that he can't buy and work out of a, there, there's three or four spec homes out there, he could buy, they could buy a spec home, and like many developers and builders do, and, and work out of that. I mean, there's a number of ways that this can be done without breaking the law, and without breaking the regulation, and I agree with you, and I agree with staff, and I agree with Dolph. We probably have to look at this for smaller subdivisions.
I don't think so.
But you can't let people do what they want to do capriciously, is my point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Any other question?
Yes, what do you consider an acceptable time certain? Three months? Two months?
No, I was thinking 48 hours.
Okay.
No. No, seriously. I, I think six months, I mean, I don't think...
That's generous. That's generous.
Yeah, I, I think you have to be reasonable.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I might make a comment, and this might be directed more towards staff. If, if the planning zoning denies a permit, I don't, it doesn't seem inherently right that they could then turn around and set a timeframe for which would be acceptable for him to violate the code. That seems like that would be the jurisdiction of the code enforcement board and not this jurisdiction. I think you're limited to either finding that he is entitled to a permit or he is not.
Thank you.
This goes to code enforcement, if they, if denied, is that correct?
Correct. Code enforcement would determine if there's a violation, and then basically set a time for compliance, and what would constitute compliance.
And that's a more appropriate place for them to give, many instances, when I was
Many instances, when I was in code enforcement, we allowed the next number of weeks or months to comply with the code. And that's where they'll come up against the time to move the.
I mean, I'm, the reason I was asking, because that's where, if he goes into filing and starts this global process on an LDR, I've never known code enforcement to force someone out if they've got an issue, if they're trying to correct the situation in the right way.
That's exactly right. If they're mitigating circumstances, code enforcement takes that into, into consideration. That, that's what'll, that's the more appropriate location for timeframes to be put on.
Yes.
So, do we need to go on? Terry Schmolfus.
You have a right to speak.
Terry Schmolfus, ten fifty-nine West Polo Grounds Drive. I don't want you all to think, when Mr. Swanson says "we," I know he's talking about himself. The whole subdivision does not want the trailer out of there. It's not a nice or, as you said, nice-looking trailer. And I want the property sold, because that's only going to help my property value there. So, I just wanted to come and say, you know, I agree with the trailer being there. I can't speak to, you know, any county enforcements or anything like that at all. But I will help Dolph if he needs to get that whatever LDL something. Go on. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, yes.
One last, rucking my brain on this time issue. One way to look at time and to come up with a time would be, if we were to build a model home, it would not be a specific builder model home, but a model home right next door on lot number two, that's going to take some time, but that could happen. And while we were doing that, I think the way this, we could have a construction trailer there, so, wouldn't the trailer be allowed to stay there while the home on lot two was being built?
Interesting point.
That's, that's going to have to be an issue at another meeting, because here we're going to have to vote up or down whether or not you're in compliance.
Okay. It's a permit through the, it's a staff decision, not ours.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
But it's a good thought process.
Up or down? Let's have it, up or down?
Anyone else? I don't see anybody else, so we close the public hearing. I would be inclined to support staff and let this thing go through the, the process and look at the LDRs and make, and I would like planning and zoning to make a recommendation to code enforcement that this thing be tabled for a while.
I don't see how we can do that.
I'm not sure we can.
That's not in our purview here.
We can make that recommendation.
How about you just stop with the first sentence?
Anyway, that's my feeling.
Well, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion here to support staff's recommendation and find that staff, staff's determination did not fail any of the four areas outlined in the LDRs, section nine oh-two dot oh-seven. And that would mean to make a motion to deny the appeal and wholly affirm staff's decision to deny the TUP application.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion. Vote.
No, I think that Dolph has a good solution, if that's his intent. It would seem that code enforcement would work with him on solutions such as that.
And that'd be the place to take it.
And that's the place to take it, so that they don't have, you know, if you don't have to bring another trailer in for construction of the other building, it would seem that would be appropriate.
Quick, Dolph, you're good.
Okay. What do I have?
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. Public hearings. Little Rising Star, request for special exception use approval for childcare facility. Again, I don't know how I'm going to say this woman's name. Sally Alkaliyali, owner, WF McCain and Associates, Inc., agent located at twenty-eight fifty-five, Fifty-Eighth Avenue, zoning classification RS3, residential, single-family, up to three units per acre, land use designation L2, low density, up to six units per acre. This is quasi-judicial. Brian.
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. Brian Freeman, Indian River County's senior planner, and this is a request for a special exception use application for a childcare facility, to be known as Little Rising Stars. And a special exception use is one that must meet specific LDR criteria in chapter nine seventy-one, and these relate to the appropriateness and compatibility of the requested use. And the process for approving a special exception use involves two public hearings. The first is tonight before the Planning and Zoning Commission, the second will be before the Board of County Commissioners. Tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission is to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to either approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application. And this is a view of the zoning map of the area, and the site is located on the west side of Fifty-Eighth Avenue, just a little bit north of Twenty-Sixth Street. And that entire area on the west side of Fifty-Eighth Avenue is located in the county and is zoned RS3, single-family residential. The area which appears white on the map is actually on the east side of Fifty-Eighth Avenue and is located within the city limits of Vero Beach. This is a view of the vicinity around the site, and as you can see, there's actually two existing churches that the proposed childcare facility would be located between. The one to the north is King's Baptist Church, and the one to the south is Living Lord Lutheran Church. And between the site and King's Baptist Church is a vacant, undeveloped, single-family lot. And then, to the south, the, there is an existing house, which is owned by the Lutheran Church, that is adjacent to the site. And then, to the west of the site, is an existing, single-family RS3 neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to convert an existing residential structure, and this will include enclosing both an open porch area as well as a two-car garage that's currently attached to the house. And in total, this building will be two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three square feet, and from this, the childcare facility will be operated. And then, as far as the recreation area for the site, that'll be located to the rear of the house and what's in the backyard of the existing house. Regarding traffic circulation, the site will utilize the existing circular driveway that serves the house, although the driveway will be improved and expanded. And this will involve a one-way circulation through the site, which will facilitate a passenger loading and unloading area at the entrance to the building. Looking at the landscape plan for the application, an arterial road buffer is required along the site's Fifty-Eighth Avenue frontage, and this is comparable to a type C buffer in plantings. And then, along the site's remaining north, south, and west boundaries, a fifteen-foot wide type C buffer. I think that may be a ten-foot, let me check. A type C buffer with a six-foot PVC stockade fence is proposed along those boundaries to satisfy the buffer requirements. As was stated, there are specific land use criteria for, and that should say, childcare facilities in the RS3 district. And the site does satisfy those. It is located adjacent to a thoroughfare road. There is a passenger loading and unloading area provided, and the applicant is to obtain the proper licensing and approval for the recreation area from the state. And also, there is the required type C permit or buffer. Based on this analysis, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that they grant special exception use approval for the childcare facility, with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Any comments up here?
How many children in this?
He beat us to it.
How many?
I don't think staff has been provided with information on what the enrollment would be. The applicant may be able to address that question.
Yes, I'd like the answer.
Hello, Chris Pontello, WF McCain and Associates, eleven seventy-one Nineteenth Street. We've got thirty children proposed to be in the facility, maximum with six staff members.
Okay, one, two, three, four.
And you've got an overpass for the?
No, no.
No, no overpass.
I have one question. There is a deceleration lane, southbound deceleration lane, and probably it's for the church. I know it's not for this project. Is there any way that can be expanded, though, that it can be used for this project? Is anybody familiar with what I'm talking about? There seemed to have been.
I don't remember a deceleration lane out there. I thought it was the end of the four lane.
Yeah. I'm not aware of a deceleration.
That's what it is. It's the end of the four lane. It goes to, yeah, transition.
That's correct.
I mean, eventually Fifty-Eighth will be.
Because I almost, I almost got creamed turning into this project today.
Bad omen.
Missed again.
Nice try, Craig.
I thought I came closer than that. You've got to learn to turn faster.
And this is basically in the same situation we had with the prior school, except this is on Fifty-Eighth, and this is a really, really busy road. And I was just wondering if there was any way to accommodate the deceleration lane, but that property's not even yours.
I don't think they have room.
Just one observation on that. Actually, what Mr. Hamner said prompted something. If you'll, if you'll notice on the drawing, the existing driveway that you probably turn into doesn't have near the turning radius of the proposed driveway. It actually does allow turning in. You don't have to slow down quite as much to turn in, so Mr. Fletcher might have to be faster after it's built.
With that blue paint on my bumper.
I mean, I had no problem with the location. I mean, this is a great location.
Yeah.
But there is actually, and if you'll, you'll notice for the, for the inbound, there is kind of a pretty significant turning radius that does allow for a quicker turnoff in a lot of the smaller driveways that you see.
I don't see, if, we didn't do a deceleration lane on eighty kids, I don't think you're going to, I don't think thirty kids.
Yeah, that wasn't on Fifty-Eighth.
Right, well.
I know.
Is that a vacant, that's a vacant lot north of there, right? RS3 vacant lot?
Correct.
Any other comments from up here? This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak?
I'll just give you the opportunity to ask me any other questions you might have.
Why, you didn't answer my last one.
What's the build-out time on, what do you expect to build this out at?
Eighteen months, a year. Well, probably they get, they get started quicker than that. The, the structure's existing, so it's, it's a matter of improving the driveway and the parking area and building the stormwater pond.
Bob, don't we have a project coming up on Twenty-Sixth Street and Fifty-Eighth in like, two years or something like that, three years?
We've got, we've got several phases of Twenty-Sixth Street. Right now, there are probably sixty to ninety percent plans for Aviation Boulevard from US One to Forty-third, and with them working, and we may, the Heritage Reserve developer may construct the Twenty-Sixth Street segment from Forty-third to Fifty-Eighth. We've been working on that recently. But that, that should occur within the next couple of years, yeah.
Okay.
They got some right-of-way issues there.
Yeah. That'll ease the section.
Okay. Any other people from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Motion?
Move approval as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Karma.
Bahia Honda Real Estate Investments, number four LLC, request to rezone plus or minus six point six seven acres located west of Ninety-Eighth Avenue and approximately twelve hundred and thirty-five feet north of State Road Sixty from A1. Agriculture One District, up to one unit per five acres to RM eight multifamily residential district, up to eight units per acre. Bahia Honda Real Estate Investments, number four LLC, owners Kimberly Horn and Associates, agent, and this is quasi-judicial. And Gail, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. How do you do?
Slithered in on us.
Yes, I did. Sleeping at my desk. As you mentioned, the subject property is located about twelve hundred feet north of State Road Sixty, and it's west of Ninety-Eighth Avenue. Hopefully, you'll be able to see that here on the graphics. It's a little over six and a half acres, and the request is to go from agricultural, or A1, to RM eight, which is residential multifamily, up to eight units per acre. And the purpose of this request is to develop the site in conjunction with the properties to the north, with uses that are allowed with the RM eight zoning district, which is consistent with its M1 designation, which allows up to eight units per acre. And if I can back up for a second here, I also wanted to mention that the property to the north and the south, which is in your staff report, it says that both of those properties are under the same ownership, that they're all owned by Bahia Honda Real Estate Development. As for existing uses, the properties north and south are undeveloped wooded parcels under the same ownership. To the west is Unit Three of Paradise Park. It's zoned A1, or agriculture. And to the east is Unit Two of Paradise Park, which is zoned RS six. And might point out that both of these subdivisions are actually non-conforming. When I say that, I mean, if they're platted, the, the size of the lots are platted at sizes that are less than what the current regulations would require. With all rezonings, we look at the following criteria, the concurrency test, the consistency with a comprehensive plan, the environmental impact of the request, and its compatibility with surrounding uses. In this case, it meets the concurrency test, it's sufficient capacity in all facilities. However, a detailed concurrency review, excuse me, review will be done at the time of project development, when there's a more specific site plan to look at. As for the comp plan, it's consistent with the objectives and policies listed here, in particular with the land use designation, which allows up to eight units per acre, and that's the request is RM eight. As for environmental impacts, aerial photos will reveal that there are some wetlands on site. In fact, some of the properties in the north that are also proposed for future development will also have some wetlands on there to be considered when those do come in. But more importantly, specifically this site, environmental survey will be required prior to land development permit issuance. And taking that into consideration, staff leaves that there's no additional adverse impacts. As for compatibility, I mentioned before, the properties, the east and west are non-conforming, they're platted out at about five, a little over five units per acre, which is really pretty close to the density that you probably would get with this request here. The property to the north is already RM eight, so it's going to be continuation of that zoning district. And to the south, you have the general commercial zoning district, and multifamily zoning districts are quite compatible with commercial uses. It's been our standard procedure to use those as a transition between less dense projects or properties, as those properties to the north, outside their reserve boundary. And in conclusion, the RM eight request is compatible with the surrounding uses, is consistent with a comprehensive plan, meets our concurrency test, and there are no additional environmental impacts. Therefore, staff supports the request and recommends that the planning and zoning approve, or make a recommendation to the board to approve the request, to rezone the property from A1 to RM eight. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gail. Any questions?
Educate me again, my alleged, mine, I thought we weren't allowed to make enclaves like A1 enclaves. How did that little A1 get in there?
Well, for a history lesson, you'll have to ask these two gentlemen here.
Tell me about creating enclaves. Isn't there some regulations that we weren't allowed to do that?
Just a short history trip.
There's no, there's no real prohibition. There is a prohibition of creating enclaves when municipalities annex areas.
Okay.
They can't create those enclaves. But, but you're correct. This is a situation we try not to create. We don't want a sliver of one zoning district there. But sometimes these things occur over time, and this is a good opportunity to rectify this situation.
Any other comments?
You got a sentence in here, which I see on quite a few of these applications. The property is not designated as environmentally important or environmentally sensitive by the comprehensive plan. When was that decided?
Well, it doesn't have the characteristics that you'd find, say, a C1 designator, C2 conservation area. I think that some of these wetlands are. I think, um, that some of these wetlands have probably occurred over time, some alterations that have occurred, permitted or not, whatever the case might be, they've just altered the landscape. And so I think these wetlands, because I talked this over with Roland, our environmental chief, and he feels, he agreed with me that these, um, alterations probably occurred over time. And now they've, I think there's something to consider, but, um, previously they, they had not been listed as environmentally important or significant.
So, I mean, when, when was this designated like that? Can you tell me, I mean?
In, in our comp plan, we have specific definitions for environmentally significant and environmentally important. And it, it generally corresponds to, uh, habitat type.
I mean, time-wise, is, I mean, if, if we were to look at it now, we'd probably have a different feeling about these. I mean, was it like-
Well, actually, you'll get an opportunity-
1982, or that's what I meant.
Oh, yeah, it, it was, uh, at least, I think in the 1990, 1990 comp plan. And you will get an opportunity to look at these with the EAR.
You'll get a shot at the site plan too, when they decide to build on it, right?
Right, right, oh absolutely, the site plan. But I think, you know, to add what Bob was saying, I mean, it's almost impossible for staff to go out and look at every bit of property throughout the county to determine whether it's, you know, environmentally important or significant. And a lot of the definitions that are in the comp plan will describe certain types of habitat, but that may not have been, it may not have fit that description, this particular property.
Pine and palmetters were never-
Right.
Considered environmentally important.
Yeah.
Today, maybe there are people that feel that way, whereas before, you know, it's different habitats.
Right.
That's what your point is, and I, but, I don't, I mean, I don't see anything else you can do with this piece of property personally, because you can't change it.
No, that's-
I mean, you can't downgrade it because you're transitioning into commercial, and it's probably, good or bad, you just, we need to do something else with it now. I mean, the guy can, I mean, it can be developed even the way it is. If you encompass it, it just drops his units a minute amount. He would, if he owns it, in contiguous, it's continuously owned, I mean, he'd develop it anyway. You can't, you're not going to stop that. He just has five, you know, so many X number of limited units, but.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Uh, I'd like to open the public hearing for public comment. Does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll, I'll close the pu- Okay, you raised your hand.
I have one question.
Okay, public hearing is closed.
Move approval.
I have, well, I, I just have one question. Please, just one quick question. There's- I can't respect. There seems to be some land clearing going on in the northeast section of the RM8 area. Do, do we have something coming before us shortly on this?
In the RM8, uh, the property that's-
North of it.
Same ownership, is that what you're for?
Yes.
Uh, no land clearing that I'm aware of. I was just out there a few weeks ago. I mean, I'm not sure.
Evidence going on?
There, there is probably some mining outside the urban service area, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, it's, it's, no, it's just, it's south of the Corrigan Ranch entrance.
Okay.
Someone knows what's going on out there? Okay.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, next one up for you, Gail. Uh, Royal Professional Builders, request to rezone approximately 29.63 acres located south of 33rd Street and approximately 1,650 feet west of 66th Avenue from A1 Agricultural District up to one unit per five acres to RS3, single-family residential district up to three units per acre. Royal Professional Builders, Peter and Celia Liddell and Louis and Toby Fretwell, owners, Shulky Biddle and Stoddard LLC Agent. This is quasi judicial, and you're up, Gail.
Okay. Don't want to sound like a broken record, so I'll just try to, you know, hit the highlights here. Again, the subject property is west of 66th Street and immediately south of 33rd, um, or excuse me, 66th Avenue and 33rd Street. It's a little less than 30 acres. The request is to go from A1 to RS3. You've seen several rezonings in this area in the last couple of years, so there's nothing new happening here that you haven't seen or approved in the past. The request is, um, the purpose of the request is to secure the zoning necessary to, um, build under the RS3 zoning district, which is consistent with L1, which does allow up to three units per acre. Uh, as for the existing land uses, uh, to the north of, of 33rd Street, that's urban service boundary. So all those properties north of that are A1 or AG1 land use designation. And, uh, you'll find single-family residences and ag uses out there. To the south, you've got Walker Club Apartments. That's zoned RM6. And immediately to the east is a portion of Trillium West, and that's RS3. And I, uh, believe our staff report, um, gives the density of that is platted at it right now. Um, to the west is the ag research facility, and that's zoned A1. Typical criteria for rezoning land use amendments. Uh, this does meet the concurrency tests. Um, traffic impact analysis has been approved, and, uh, there's sufficient capacity on facilities. And of course, a detailed review will be done at the time of site plan. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, in particular the land use designation, uh, the L1, which allows up to three units per acre. And you can see by this, um, future land use map, we've got up to six units per acre and eight units per acre to the east and south of this, um, area. As for environmental impacts, um, this is a disturbed site. It's been used for agricultural purposes. There is, um, a house and some accessory buildings on site used, but, but have been used for ag purposes. Therefore, uh, staff leaves, there's no adverse environmental impacts. Um, as for compatibility, um, you've got the RS3 to the, to the east, which is, uh, platted about 2.5 acres or units per acre. So it's going to be continuation of that RS3. You noticed earlier in another slide that there was RS3 at the extreme end of 33rd Street where it, uh, abuts the 74th Avenue canal. Um, to the south, you've got RM6, and RS3 is a good transition from this multifamily between the, uh, multifamily to the south and the, um, ag uses to the north. Um, and to the west, the A1 property, um, as we've said before, this is considered a holding area. If it's inside the urban service area and it has an A1, uh, or excuse me, uh, A1 zoning district, at some point in time, that probably will be rezoned and developed. In conclusion, the RS3 is compatible with surrounding uses, consistent with our comp plan, meets the concurrency test, no additional environmental impacts. Therefore, staff supports the request and recommends that you, um, recommend to the board to approve the request to rezone from A1 to RS3. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Uh, I do have one question. In this case, um, when you, when you have this property abutting the urban service area, but the urban service area is a, a road, does that, that buffer still apply?
Yeah, yes, the 50-foot buffer does apply on this. In fact, I think that's a new regulation was revised a few months ago.
All right.
Years ago, was it? Wasn't that long? Wow.
Any other issue?
We have a, the, the, we've had this issue come up several times because there's a, a tract of land out there, the, that's an ag institute that does a lot of studies of agriculture. They do a lot of spraying, they do a lot of experimental work. Um, it's probably, it's, it's a very active, small area. And I, I don't remember, we couldn't, we didn't, couldn't deed notice to landowners, but I know we put the buffer in. There's a substantial, a bigger buffer around this than I think even is required elsewhere. But, uh, you know, it's just, we need to make sure they notice any homeowners that, it was like the same thing I think we did in the south with the apartments, is they need to know that this is there. Because inevitably, you know, if he sprays at night or if something happens, somebody must not going to like it. And the fact is, he was there first.
It's like the airport.
And he is, uh, indomitable in the fact that he's going to remain there and do what he's doing, even if it comes into multifamily buildings. He's got, he's holding tough. So I think he needs the, we need to protect his right to do that.
Is that something that we can do here?
I think, I mean, it's laid out. I think that we've asked, I don't think we ever required anything, but I think we have asked any land use, site plan that it comes up, it's at least at minimum, notice homeowners and stuff.
Right, we'll, we'll deal with it when the subdivision plat comes in, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get another shot at it.
All right, um, any other comments from up here?
This is going to trip, 852 trips per day. I mean, how much room do we have left on Route 60? Because this is going to feed into Route 60, right?
Yes.
Oh, wow. They got a 43rd. I just, I'm surprised at 852 trips, but it's what it reads here. 90 peak hour trips.
Is this a 40 acre?
Uh, it's just under 30.
30 acres, okay. So that trips, okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing to see anybody wish to speak.
Joe DeBiddle, Shulky Biddle and Stoddard. Um, with the rezoning tragically, um, we're forced to take the amount of acreage and assume three units per acre. So it's going to be-
The maximum.
When we come in, uh, we already have submitted a plenary plat, and, uh, we meet all the new GAC requirements, so, and it's closer to two units per acre, so, just answer that question. And if you have any other questions?
I don't think so.
You'll be, you'll be paving out to 66th?
Um, yes, that's something we'll have to work on with 33rd Street in the right of way. Um, and that, that's going to come up with the plenary plat. So also, um, I know with Indian Springs, or we have, uh, Stony Brook Farms, um, there's a couple of them with the navigation easement we've had to do with the noise easements. That's something, going back to the conversation about the, uh, crop dust, that's something-
I knew we, there's something we started doing, I think, that we-
Which I, you know, it's, I'm sure that's something we'll have on there anyways.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Uh, move approval.
Second? Somebody?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes. Are you opposed?
I'm going to fly with this one. I just-
Okay.
What does that mean?
Passes unanimously.
Okay.
Car's on 60.
Yep. Car's on 60 bothers me, that's all.
Okay, we have one more, Gail. Red Stick Golf Course Inc., uh, request to rezone, uh, 1.11, approximately 1.11 acres located east of 58th Avenue and approximately 170 feet south of 85th Street from A1 Agriculture 1 to RM6 multifamily residential district up to six units per acre. Red Stick Golf Course Inc. is the owner, and Doug Batunek is the agent, and this is quasi judicial. Uh, Gail, you're up.
Yeah, this is just a itty-bitty rezoning, so you shouldn't swat any bullets over this one. Um, this is immediately, um, e, excuse me, east of 58th Avenue and 170 feet south of 85th Street, uh, slightly over one acre, and the request is to RM6. The purpose of this request is to develop the site with the uses allowed under the RM6 zoning district, which is, uh, consistent with the M1, uh, land use designation, which actually allows up to eight units per acre. As for the existing land uses here, um, to the north, you've got an RM6 zoning district already with a single-family home on it. I'd like to point out this PD here is under the same ownership as what the, the subject property is. It's Red Stick Golf Course. And, uh, Red Stick does own this RM6 that you see immediately to the east. Uh, there is an odd out parcel here that's owned by, um, Church. I think that can probably, can, um, give more information on that. I forget the name right now. And it has the same characteristics as the subject property where it's split by an RM6 and A1 zoning district. Uh, typical criteria for rezoning land use amendments, uh, there's sufficient capacity. In fact, this is de minimis really. There's very little impact at all with this request on transportation or the rest of the facilities. As, uh, for consistency with the comp plan, it certainly meets the, um, M1 land use designation. It's actually less than, uh, the maximum density would be allowed under that. And it meets the objectives and policies of our comp plan. Again, it's not designated as environmentally significant or important. Um, however, if there were some, um, protected trees on the site, those would probably need to be flagged and taken into consideration during site plan review. Um, because of the size of the property, there's little or no impact on the environment really, and so therefore there's no adverse impacts on the environment. As for compatibility, it's continuation of the RM6 zoning district. Um, the golf course to the north and south, uh, won't have any impact on this. They're quite compatible one another with multifamily. And, uh, the RS3 properties to the, are to the west are going to be separated by at least 108 foot, just for the right of way of 58th Avenue. Overall, the impact is relatively insignificant. The RM6 is compatible with surrounding uses, is consistent with our comp plan, meets our concurrency tests, no environmental impacts. Staff supports the request and makes recommendation. P&amp;Z also recommended to the board to approve the request to rezone to RM6.
Thank you, Gail. Any comments from up here?
Is that all wooded, as you have in purple there to the south? I, I didn't-
Yeah, that's the golf course area.
Golf course.
Don't they have, they, in the middle of it, they've got their clubhouse and they, I mean, I assume they're going to put in some former more housing of some sort.
Well, right. I don't want to speak for the African. I think they can address it, but I believe that was mentioned.
Okay, uh, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak? I don't see anybody, so let's close the public hearing. Motion?
Approval.
Second?
Under discussion.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, uh, discussion.
Is Mr. Batunek here?
Yes, he is.
I'll beat him up.
Actually, I don't want to beat you up. I just want to know if you're Charlie's son.
I am. He's my dad. He's a great guy, and I look up to him a lot.
I'd like to rescind my motion.
My condolences. My condolences, and I want to vote no.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously.
Tell Charlie hello for me, please.
All right. Planning matters. Commissioners matters, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. We did have a couple of things that- Dr. Baker, do you want to talk now about putting that thing together about the countywide plan?
Well, I'd like to see it, but I did talk during the break with, uh, Mr. Keating, and he indicated it would be very difficult because we don't have so many scrub jay-
What?
-habitats available to do it, but I think the US Fish and Wildlife would like to talk to the county to do something such thing.
We, we will talk to them. I, I can tell you, it's pretty expensive to do. I think, I can't remember how much we spent when we did the scrub jay HCP for the Sebastian area, but it was pretty expensive. And the challenge that we'd have is HCPs are usually related to projects that are going to impact resources. And you need mitigation to compensate for that impact. And the problem with us doing a countywide HCP is, first of all, we wouldn't, we don't have the mitigation. And the second thing is, we don't want developers to get off the hook without paying anything and the county mitigating. But we, we will coordinate with US Fish and Wildlife Service.
That's an interesting conundrum.
Sorry, I thought you were going to bring something up.
Uh, yes, well, I think I brought it up about, um, going to rediscuss the left turn lanes and the appropriateness of the counts on certain types of-
Oh, yeah.
Roadways, like 58th, 66th, you know, the high-traffic areas.
How do we do that? We're just going to get them to give us a review of the current?
Well, we've reworked this so many times, but we still seem, and I know it's frustrating, but you would think after all the times we have reworked this, that we kind of like get it right, but- Okay, I heard that stopped.
No, I mean, I think that what I, if, if we're going to do what you're talking about, which is, is to a certain, is, is identifying major highways or roads that are of ultra-concern, I think what I would do is, I, I think a discussion needs to be held with Chris and say, and see what has his position on, if, if he thinks the numbers on 58th ought to be different than the numbers on 8th. If he says that with the four-laning or not, maybe there's a, something in his transportation system that would say justify on a major highway, you don't want anybody slowing down to turn right. You want them to pull off and turn in. And I think that in, in, uh, maybe he'd come and answer questions for all of us or something, but rather than initiating, trying to initiate an LDR, is maybe we ought to have a discussion with him about the concern that we've identified because of 66th and see what he says, and then move from there.
Find some interim fix, yeah.
I think that's probably the best way to go.
You could do it one-on-one, or we can ask him to come here for a brief, on a, on a short night.
One that's not action-packed.
The EAR is coming. I don't know if we're going to have any short ones, but, but I mean, I think it would be good, instead of forcing an LDR, is maybe it is at least-
We have to do something. This, this comes up- We have to do something, this comes up every night.
It does, every meeting.
Yes, every meeting.
Every bloody meeting, it's come up.
So, we just need to fix it.
With that in mind, Bob, is it, would you, given the time allotted in here, would you think that that's something that, would everybody wanna hear Chris for a twenty or thirty-minute period, and then work him in, or would you rather do it individually? Because we could certainly visit him individually.
Excuse me, were you supposed to discuss Diamond Court West tonight?
Ah, you poor thing. That was the first thing on the agenda.
I know, this is right past my bedtime.
That was the first thing on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, it came and went very quickly.
We did it three hours ago.
Yeah.
I did, I didn't see-
Yeah, it was right at the front of the agenda.
Did you, did you wanna, I'm sorry, but I think we should ask, what, did you wanna speak in opposition to it?
No, I, I just wanna know what's going on there. My property is in Casabella, and it's right, they're gonna develop right in back of my property, and I wanna know what kind of a buffer they're going to have there.
Well, we'll get staff to-
He'll come tell you exactly what's going on one-on-one, rather than-
Thank you.
You poor thing.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, he's got-
Okay, so, um, can, can we maybe get Chris to come?
I'm sure Chris will be more than willing to come and discuss turn lanes.
All right.
Set it up on a short night, so he doesn't have to stay up so late.
But I think the, I think the issue here is not some, it's the formula's countywide, and what we're trying to, I think that's, if you listen to what the concerns are, which you like to be precise in the concerns, I think the concerns are occurring on heavily-travel roads.
Yeah, arterial.
Or perception of heavily travel versus the other, so, we'll see what he says. I think he's, can bring out his old notes again.
Let him do his dance, we'll see what he-
Hey, Stan, you're up.
It's your dance.
Thank you for coming.
Looking at the, um, the ideas from the April twenty-fifth Quality of Development Workshop, and just one thing, because I, because I don't wanna, wanna miss it. Ms. Keys, you mentioned a clearing activity, um, I'd like to check up on that, or have staff do that, was that off of Ninetieth Avenue?
It was the northeast corner of that RM eight section, it's, I think it was twenty, Twenty-sixth Street and Ninetieth Avenue.
Okay, thanks.
And, and it could be somebody's just cleaning out the canal, I don't know.
Sure, sure, we just wanna, uh, we come to you all, at, at the last meeting, with, with the matrix that we have of the, of the different ideas, and you all, I think, got an understanding of how that matrix works, what it means-
That was well done.
-how it's broken down, and as I mentioned before, we had fifty-two ideas at the last, at the, at the workshop, forty-two of which we are certainly plugging into the EAR process, which you all will be involved in. There are a few others, too, that I think are part of other initiatives that are going on, but the reason for this classification or buckets was to try to break it down to areas where there could be some responsibilities or oversight, and involve some of you. The other item, of course, to go through is, are the, you know, are all fifty-two ideas ones that you want to pursue? Are there conflicts between them? Are there some priorities you wanna assign? Obviously, a lot of work will go into the EAR, but there may be some other items here that, that you don't agree with, that you don't wanna pursue. We certainly don't wanna be spending staff time or your time on things that you, that you're, you're not interested in pursuing, so prioritizing, we think is important, because there are, are limitations. So I'll just, Mr. Chairman, leave it, leave it to you all to, to discuss and provide direction, and we'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments?
Um, a few, I'd, uh, increased densities inside urban service area, where, where did that come up from? Was that the ten units to the acre when they were here presenting, versus maybe eights, and just the way the attraction, attractiveness of a development may be? I, I didn't remember where it came up, came from.
I think if you look at, I think that came up under some, some of the new urbanism concepts that were, that were discussed about, it's, it's not just a matter of, you know, overall average density, it's clustering, it's where do you, where do you concentrate development, and where do you keep it out?
Mm-hmm.
And so that means you're gonna increase densities, net density, actually, if you're looking countywide in some areas, and decrease it maybe in others. Transfer density rights is part of that, too, possibly, so, I think that's where it came up. You may have a bucket and a number associated with it, but I didn't, I didn't find it right away myself.
Okay. Are, if, if we have projects in here, um, I mean, there's some things in, big-picture stuff under the, like the architectural bucket, establish the Architectural Review Board. Is this, I mean, if we continue with this, are we gonna, this goes to be Board of County Commissioners, is their responsibility, I guess, is that whether they wanna establish this? I was, I was, some of this, the biggest picture stuff, I was wondering how you moved ahead with it, or not?
Some of these are, and I, I had mentioned this, actually, the first, uh, first meeting after the workshop, that there's certainly gonna be resource limitations.
That's, that's my point, I'm just wondering how you, you go to that. We've got in the remainder bucket, you've got, um, appoint professionals to the Planning and Zoning Commission, by me, but I'm not, you know, I don't know if that's really what the commission would want, but, um, the, uh, notes like recognize shifts in parent, I don't know how you write that in, or we just tack it on our head? License, uh, site work contractors to pull licenses of those who do bad work, in theory, that sounds pretty good, but it's a legal issue. So I mean, I, you know, I don't know, I mean, at what point do the, from your standpoint, here's our list, great, how do you sort this out, and, and say this is real or not, and just, because the list will shorten itself, because some of these aren't-
And we have authority.
Aren't really, they're great ideas, and they shouldn't go away in one regard, but on the other hand, I'm not sure how you implement it.
I think through the EAR process, what we're doing is, we're collecting data, we're doing analysis, and the analysis should identify problems and issues and potential solutions. And these, we'll, we'll look specifically at these issues, we'll try to, in our analysis, determine, is there an issue that, that architectural criteria and Architectural Review Committee could solve? And then we'd need to determine what is it we would wanna achieve, what are our objectives we wanna achieve with an Architecture Review Committee, and how do we do it? You know, what, what would the policy be, and how do we set it up? And, you know, all of the mechanics would come out later in the LDR that, that follows the compliance.
I mean, personally, I think any technical, the technical research that you get to a point before it gets to us, all of the research, if it can be done well, makes all the sense in the world. Item eight, though, under remainder bucket, is for the P and Z to recognize that a predictable approval process is essential. If you've jumped through all those hoops, I want you to tell me, I can't say no.
Yeah, tying this to the EAR is gonna ferret out a lot of this, yeah, as to whether it's practical, or who do it, yeah.
I think this has been very helpful, though, you know, I think that we've kinda focused, you know, a lot on, on the bigger picture, so, it'll be interesting to see how it all falls out.
Fallout on this from the EAR study.
I know, I mean, I think what you want is us to either, to have gone through this and maybe prioritize some things, and then say, well, this is not a good idea, but I'm not sure, I mean, I think all of these are great ideas, but I think the reality is, is are they feasible?
Right, you're, you're correct, and I think, um, what we're trying to stress is that we think forty-two of these fifty-two will get integrated and input somehow into the EAR, and we've, so, um, a lot of this will be taken care of through that, and this may be something you'll wanna refer to as you go through the EAR, and you go through different elements, and see if it, for yourself, if it's, it's really up to you all, how, how and if you wanna pursue this in any manner outside of the EAR, or not.
I have, there's one, on item one of the, it's the one about sustaining agriculture, says provide incentives for sustaining, sustaining agriculture, promote viable alternative crops such as biofuels. That's really, that's a great idea, but I'd like to also add in there, including removal of abandoned groves or property, because, I mean, harboring disease is a problem, too, so, if you'd stick that in there-
Post-community for- A lot of these are gonna have fallout, too, where establish the Architectural Review Committee for peer review, you can have a, a review board all you want to, but, yeah, I don't like that, but what authority do you attach to that review? I don't like your pillars, I don't like, we can't tell somebody they can't put pillars or paint it green.
Oh, yeah, they can, too.
Well, actually, I, that's gonna kinda work the way the corridor plans work now, we have a peer, I guess I would call it peer review, it's a review committee that makes sure that a development fits in with the corridor plan.
So what you're telling me, we can put some teeth to the review committee?
I mean, most of these, I'd like to, I mean, a lot of these, most of these, I'd like to see implemented if we can, I mean, the water, the water list is terrific.
Some of it depends, just in terms of our, our practice, Mr. Bruce has brought up the, our practice with the corridor, uh, plan, um, what happened there is, there are some specific architectural guidelines and options, the committee was more, probably more involved in every single project initially, and I think once the development community got used to those standards, a lot of those issues became more and more routine. We still do get committee members coming in and looking, but, but-
But it was also-
Development community got used to it, so I, I think there are times when, if you establish some guidelines, they, they can be followed pretty easily over time.
I think the other thing that these peer review committees did was, it kinda headed things off at the pass early on, um, you know, the, if the peer review committee told a developer, hey, you know, we think you're going down the wrong path here, they, they would sit and look at it and say, hey, you know, we're gonna get some opposition on this, so, let's see if we can't shift things around here. And it seems to have worked reasonably well.
So when, like, I'm interested in the water, like, Dr. Baker and I are really heavily interested in the water, how do I get involved during this process with the water systems when we start this? What's the timeline?
I think the water goes to Utility Advisory Committee, correct?
Right, it goes, it's, the first-
You have Soil Conservation, too.
Right, the initial committee, right, Soil Conservation and Utilities Advisory Committee, that would be one place to get involved now, and, and you may already have been, for instance, at the Water Supply Workshop. And, and so you can get in, you can get involved there, eventually, those will come through the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, but getting involved early on-
Upfront.
-with, with the kind of initial committees, I believe in, in the past, Bob, I'm, it's probably been several packets ago, we had a, a list of all the different committees for the EAR and what, what happened.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's, that kinda tells, tells you where, where you can, where you can plug in, but if there's some specific ones, feel free to, to email me, and I'll make sure that the staff people that are involved in it lets you know, you know, if there's a committee that's addressing it, and what the next step is, we'd be glad to do that.
Is there anything in this list that you all, as staff members and planners, think is either unreasonable, um, not practical, or conflicts with what you would, you would consider good planning, um, matters?
Yeah, you need to tell us if you need to get rid of some of these, that they're unrealistic, because we don't wanna waste time on, especially your time.
Well, I think they did, but I don't know, I just wanna be sure, you know?
We, we didn't call out any, I mean, we, whatever ideas there were, we, we put down here, but-
It's not an accusation, please.
No, no, I'm just saying, I, I think we put down what was, what was, I think there's some that actually conflict with each other, and that's what we mentioned before.
I mean, we may overlook that, so, you know, if, if you think that, what would you, which ones conflict?
Yeah, just, just point them out or combine them, is all we're selling to you.
And, and I guess the question is, if you wanna throw those out, or, or go through that now, or if you want during the EAR process to, to look at that?
Will that just be, actually, that's gonna be a fallout of the, of the EAR series of hearings and discussions, isn't it?
I think for a lot of them, it will be.
Yeah, they'll drop offline, or get combined somewhere. Indian River Farms, relief canal projects, hmm, you don't wanna talk to me about Indian River Farms?
So, do you all just wanna use this, this matrix kind of as, as a tool, is, just in terms of mostly when the EAR comes up? Or is there anything outside of that that you all want us to?
I guess, to reword this very quickly, is, is if there's anything in here that's conflicting, that will either, is gonna create a problem in the EAR process, that you need an answer, yes or no, or something that you see that's conflicting, we haven't brought up or don't recognize, that's, that, then you need to bring it up, if not-
We're gonna accept it as isn't.
Right. I think what I'm hearing is that we're gonna use this as a, as a guide-
Tool, right.
As a tool in the process of going through the EAR, and then, you know, we may find that we didn't address some of these after we go through that process, and then we need to revisit those that we didn't address, and see if they need to be addressed differently, I guess.
Is there gonna be one person on staff that's going to be overseeing this? It's, I mean, you're totally responsible, Bob, but are you gonna have, I mean, this is a big job.
Right.
What, what we've got is, we've got probably six or seven different planners right now working on EAR elements, and they've been given this matrix, and told that, that they need to incorporate these ideas, or look at them when they're doing their EAR element.
Agreed. For the contract with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council to prepare plan, is that something you all are willing, or we desire to do?
Sure, that, that's not a problem, I can tell you some of the, I can't see right now where the specific issues are that are conflicting, but we did have some conflicts, I think, when we had, I think, the Architects Panel talking about the Form-based codes and the new urbanism and compact development, and when we got to the developers, there was, I think, one or more of them that said, we need to continue allow, to allow flexibility, cul-de-sac subdivisions, not requiring interconnections, I, I know that when we were going through, those were some major conflicts that I saw, I don't know whether some of those actually-
If you don't gotta point it out now in the EAR process, then you need to make clear that whatever, that, that you've had a conflict, and this is where we've gone.
Right, let me just, just give you one example, page eight, Transportation Bucket, got the first eleven listed out there, and it's not that it's necessarily, you know, these are, these are fatal, sometimes they're balancing, in fact, we talked about connectivity night, Sixty-fourth Avenue, Sixty-sixth Avenue, but if you look at, at number four, which is kind of pro-connectivity, promoting connectivity, and then, um, you go down to ten, recognize safety concerns of residents regarding through streets, so you gotta, you know, those, those don't go together unless you address, and you balance it off, you may have traffic calming, you may have, okay, now, we need to develop criteria when we have cut through traffic, or we're funneling, we're only doing one connection, and we're funneling all the traffic through one street, so, those are, those have to be balanced off, that's just one example that, um, we'll, we'll bring those up when they come up.
Sounds good. Anything else? We're adjourned.